All right, do I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Ballon?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
So moved.
Second. Dr. Roundtree and Dr. Gitry, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, thanks everybody for being here tonight. Hopefully you all got here early to enjoy the BMS choir out there performing, sounds like they still are, so that's a great treat for everybody tonight. I would like to ask that we join us, that everyone join us for a moment of silence for one of our staff members who recently passed away, Mr. Clifton Lee McCoy. Okay, great, thank you. Next up is our MCPS mission and belief statements. Our student representatives tonight are Mallory Akers from Auburn High School and Marina Lee from Blacksburg High School. Will you please read our mission and belief statements?
Our mission statement is, "MCPS is an innovative educational community. We value diversity and we are committed to equity and inclusion. MCPS empowers learners to realize success in an ever-changing global society through collaboration with communities, families, staff, and students. MCPS provides a safe, engaging learning environment and intentional exposure to positive social, emotional, and academic experiences."
Our beliefs are, "All students can learn in order to pursue their dreams. Schools are safe places of joy, wonder, and creativity. Every person deserves to be loved, valued, and respected. Kindness is an essential skill of responsible, productive community member. The diversity of our community is one of our greatest strengths. All people deserve equitable access to opportunities and resources. Every child deserves an advocate. Honoring the voices of students and other stakeholders strengthens the school's community. Open communication and feedback are vital to our growth. Learning and teaching are collective efforts that begin at birth and involve the entire community. Relationship building and high expectations are foundational to a student's success."
Okay, great, thank you both. Our next item of business is student representative reports. Mallory, do you have a report from Auburn High School?
Yes. So far for our fall sports, there was, there's five sports that are in the fall that we have, and three of them won the state championships this year, which were golf, cross-country, and volleyball. The girls volleyball team, I was there at the game and the environment was loud, supportive. Everybody was very interested in what was going on. It was a very good game to watch. They won in three sets, and Gretchen Surphys was the winning kill of the game. After watching JV's girl basketball game, they are a team full of eighth graders, and so far from watching that game, I feel like they are gonna have a super successful season and that in the future, whenever they grow and build together, they will be a really tough competition for the other teams. Indoor track has over fifty participants. Our Heritage Club had a successful night to honor veterans, and there were over fifty pictures of veterans that went back to like the Vietnam War to now. This Thursday is a choir concert, and then the band concert is on the eleventh. The Student Leadership Council, they created the Twelve Days of Holiday, and that is just encouraging school spirit, and all the days leading up to Christmas, we have something that we're doing every day in the school. Like today, we were to wear like holiday socks, and then I think tomorrow's to wear green for the Grinch, and yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. And Marina, do you have a report from Blacksburg High School?
Yes, so last month, our girls and boys cross-country and our golf team all won their Class Four state championships. Our theater one-act team won both the sub and super region, and will compete for the state championship this Saturday at Piedmont Valley Community College. In the fine arts department, the band will hold their winter concert on Monday, December sixteenth at seven, and the choir will hold its magical performance on Saturday, December seventh, and their winter concert Tuesday, December tenth at seven. And the drama department will be performing Puffs on December thirteenth at seven, fourteenth at two, and seven, and then fifteenth at two for the community. School counseling will hold a FAFSA workshop for seniors and their parents after school on December tenth in the library. And then with winter sports underway, the girls' basketball team had their first game last night against Floyd, and the boys' team has their first game Friday night. The swim team is hosting their first home match tonight against CHS.
Okay, great, thank you both. Next up, Dr. Barbara Wickham, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, will start our presentation for Seniors of the Month.
Board members, Chair Hudson and Dr. Bragan. At this time, it is with great joy and pride that we celebrate the extraordinary achievements of an outstanding senior from each of our four high schools. This recognition is a testament to the unwavering dedication, resilience, and outstanding character that each of these exceptional individuals has displayed throughout their academic journey. As we present their profiles on the screen and in the lobby of our central office, we invite you to reflect on their stories of leadership, perseverance, and commitment to excellence. Each senior's presentation offers a glimpse into their unique talents, passions, and aspirations. You'll hear heartfelt quotes from the teachers and administrators who nominated them for this recognition. These exceptional students represent the best of our educational community and also reflect the nurturing, guidance, and support of our families and our educators. Each school administrator will come forward to present in the following order. David Hurd, Principal of Auburn High School. Chris Stewart, Principal at Blacksburg High. And Ty Lewis, Principal of Eastmont Elementary, or Eastmont High School. Our Christiansburg High School senior will be recognized at our January meeting. Mr. Hurd.
Good evening, members of the board, Chair Hudson, Dr. Bragan, Ms. Osborne. I'd like to ask Tanion Colley and his family to come to the podium as the December Senior of the Month for Auburn High School. The December Senior of the Month for Auburn High School was Tanion Colley. Tanion has been a great student at AHS during his time here, and has demonstrated character in everything he does. Even though he's accomplished much, Tanion always remains humble and kind. He has shined in interscholastic academic competition and received academic and leadership honors. A teacher wrote about Tanion, "Tanion Colley is an exceptional young man who is well-disciplined and eager to learn. His skill in mathematics is outstanding. Tanion has completed all of his mathematics courses offered at Auburn High School. In each of these courses, he's demonstrated a high level of intelligence and analytical skill. Tanion has made contributions in both group activities as well as class discussions. His level of participation and preparedness always goes beyond what is expected. This dedication is also seen in his involvement in the community service activities through National Beta Club. Tanion will continue to excel due to these outstanding traits. Tanion plans to attend Radford University and pursue a career in cybersecurity once he graduates from Auburn High School." So congratulations, Tanion Colley.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Bragan. It is my privilege to recognize Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month. Tonight, I'd like to recognize Abigail Schnitz as the December Senior of the Month for Blacksburg High School. I'd like to invite Abigail and her family to please come up and join me. I'd like to take a moment and read a statement from one of Abigail's teachers. "Abigail has demonstrated exceptional dedication and skill in technology, achieving thirteen industry certifications, including the prestigious Microsoft Word Expert and multiple Cisco certifications. She's excelled with the highest recorded scores in several Microsoft certification exams, underscoring her technical expertise. Alongside her certifications, Abigail has earned twenty-one dual enrollment credits at New River Community College, advancing in both cybersecurity and computer programming pathways. As the captain of her high school's cybersecurity competition team and tutor for dual enrollment Cyber Security One, she has proven herself a leader among her peers. Additionally, Abigail's active internship with Virginia Tech's Information Technology Network Security Department provides her with invaluable real-world experience rounding out an impressive profile in the field of cybersecurity. Congratulations, Abigail."
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Bragan. It's an honor to be here this evening to recognize the Eastern Montgomery High School Senior of the Month for December, Kaylee Williams. Kaylee's here with her grandmother, and I ask them to come forward at this time. One of Kaylee's teachers, Jenny Brown, wrote the following highlighting her qualifications for this honor. "Kaylee demonstrates a mature balance between her academic life and personal life. A consistent high achiever in the classroom, she demonstrates a passion for learning. She's a self-starter and an active participant in discussions and projects, always contributing to the task and adding depth. Kaylee has an earnest desire to succeed and advocates for herself and her needs. She is willing to devote the necessary time to extend her understanding beyond the allotted class period. Kaylee is genuinely kind, respectful toward teachers, peers, and of herself, and she has a sense of humor. These qualities contribute to her leadership abilities. Outside of school, Kaylee continues to display her positive work ethic through various internships and experiences, her involvement in community groups, and dedication to her family and friends. Her desire to help others is evident in all aspects of her life, both inside and outside of school. Kaylee will excel in whatever path she takes in the future, and we are so proud of her and thankful she is a Mustang. Please join me in congratulating Kaylee Williams as the EMHS Senior of the Month." All right, great, thank you all. Next up, Ms. Connie Froggett, the President of the Montgomery County Educational Foundation, will present grant award certificates to the respective educators who are receiving grant awards from the MCEF.
And I'm gonna invite Dr. Matt Dunleavy to help me this evening. This is a two-person job. Thank you Chair Hudson, Dr. Bragan, Ms. Osborne, and board members. Good to see y'all, many of you again. I'm excited to present to you this evening, for the first time at a school board meeting, the recipients of this year's MCEF Grant Awards, also known as the Montgomery County Educational Foundation. Since 2012, the MCEF, in conjunction with Community Foundation of the New River Valley, has awarded over $380,000 to MCPS educators, PTAs, PTOs, other support organizations, and even students through our educator grant program. Every one of our schools has benefited from this program. The purpose of the grant program is to improve our students' educational opportunities by funding creative and innovative projects that go beyond the scope of available public funding. In short, to reward excellence, to celebrate and support public education, something that is often has not done enough these days. MCF grant recipients represent the best in public education in our county, like our Seniors of the Month, like our Teachers of the Year. Most MCPS teachers of the year are actually also MCF grant recipients as well. I'd like to start first with, before I get to the awards, make a couple of exciting announcements. First, the MCEF will be featured this month in the December edition as the nonprofit, December edition of the Blacksburg Living Magazine, so be sure to look for that free publication in the mail and at businesses around the town. And secondly, the MCEF held a special fundraiser during the Community Foundation's Give Local Event earlier this year called, "Give Your Favorite Teacher a High Five." Parents were asked to donate to the MCEF in honor of an outstanding teacher in their child's life. For every five dollars donated, that teacher was entered into a drawing for a hundred-dollar gift card, and I'm excited to announce tonight that the winner of that drawing was Dr. Cheryl Burrell Graves. Dr. Burrell Graves doesn't know this yet, so she'll find out. All right, so to start off our awards, I want to recognize some of the people who made this evening possible, starting with our MCEF Board of Directors. So behind the president of every nonprofit is a board of directors trying to keep them in line. This board has a particularly hard job. I would like to ask all MCEF board members who are here tonight, including those on the dais, to please stand and be recognized for all the volunteer hours you put into this foundation, and thank you for putting up with me. Please stand. I also want to recognize our principals who are here tonight for the support they have given to these grant recipients and all of the educators and staff in their buildings. Would our principals also please stand to be recognized? Okay, and now to our sponsors and our grant recipients. Awards require funds, and the MCEF is fortunate to have so many loyal donors and grant sponsors. I will call up sponsors first, and then each grant recipient. I ask that our grant recipients, once you receive your certificate, line up across here, kind of the way we do for Teachers of the Year, and the audience can actually hold your applause to the end, and we will have a brief opportunity for pictures with everyone up here, and then after the celebration, during the break, we're gonna go downstairs and do a group picture of everyone in front of the Christmas tree, and hopefully if the board has the opportunity during their break to come down, we hope you will join us. All right, so I would like to begin by calling up Jessica Workout. Jessica is the Executive Director of the Community Foundation of the New River Valley. We've enjoyed a wonderful partnership with them since our refounding, I should say, not our inception in 2012, and the list of grants you're about to hear about all came from funds provided either through one of our two endowments or from two funds that they manage that were kind enough to also grant awards to our educators. So, awardees, as I call your name, please come up. Dr. Dunleavy will give you your certificate, and you'll have the opportunity to meet your sponsor. We think it's important that our donors and our recipients get to meet each other so that they see what they've done, they hear what the great things they're doing, and learn about them. So I'd like to start with Kathy Wilson-Klatka from Eastern Montgomery High School. Kathy is receiving an award for the Walking Club, which is an after-school club at EMHS, and she wanted to expand their experience by purchasing some additional sports equipment so they can do more than just walking after school. And this award, as well as the next one that I'm announcing, come from the Shirley Van Dresser Guidance Fund. The other recipient is Trio Springer from Gilbert-Linkus Elementary School. Trio is going to purchase fourth and fifth grade hygiene kits for her students, as well as a locking cabinet to keep things safe in the health office. But next, I would like to move on to another fund managed by the Community Foundation. This is the Walking With Fund. The first recipient is Leslie Hunter from Prices Fork Elementary School. Leslie will be purchasing books and incentives for their school-wide reading program that allows kids to take home a book and an incentive and a bookmark to read at home and share with their family. And then Tanley Bowdoin from Shawsville Middle School. She will be purchasing a tablet-based incentive, I'm sorry, a PBIS program, incentives for a PBIS program that the PBIS group at their school is sponsoring. So this will incentivize students for good behavior. All right, so I'm gonna move on to one of the MCEF funds. These next two grants come from our endowment fund. First, I would like to recognize Tammy Heft, and standing in for her tonight is David Hurd from Auburn High School. She will be using the funds to help her students attend the VHSL Student Leadership Conference and Competitions this year. And the other recipient from this fund is Lena Martz from Shawsville Middle School. She will be using her grant to cover expenses for the Future Business Leaders of America Conference and Competition for her students. Our next award does come from an MCEF fund, but it is named in honor of a former MCPS teacher who died tragically very young. This is the Bonnie Kitts Memorial Grant, and tonight it is going to Joanie King from Christiansburg Middle School. Joanie is gonna purchase all the equipment to raise trout in her classroom. She didn't say anything about fishing, sorry. And then the last grant from the Community Foundation I'd like to recognize, this is the Phyllis Albritton Honorary Grant. Phyllis, of course, was a former school board member and one of the board members who helped refound this foundation in 2010, 2011. And this one goes to Miranda Martin from Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. I might add Miranda was our top-scoring grant this year. Miranda is going to create what's called a Zen Den for elementary school students who need a place to go and chill or whatever, because even our younger ones sometimes need that extra support. So these are all of our grants that were, have been funded by community foundation funds. Thank you, Jessica, for being with us. All right, I'm gonna move on next to grants coming from the Corning Incorporated Foundation. If Rachel is here?
Are you here, Rachel?
Yes, wonderful. So we have a representative from the Corning Incorporated, she's actually from our local Corning plant, Director of HR. These funds come from the Corning Incorporated Foundation. They offer a grant program which we have been extremely fortunate to receive now for nearly a decade, and we received our highest award ever this year, which allowed us to fund five grants. And we actually increased our amount this year for the first time. We'd been doing a thousand dollars maximum, we increased that to two thousand, so a lot of what you're seeing today are two thousand dollar grants. The first one goes to Erin Thompson, who is representing the Bellevue Elementary School PTA. This is a science-based reading teacher resources library to provide additional resources in terminology in the new science-based curriculum. Our next recipient is Cameron Harris-Gilliam from Christiansburg Middle School. She purchased a tablet-based point-of-sale system for her marketing classes so students can learn what real-world purchasing is like. The next award goes to Dr. Jim Hill from Eastern Montgomery High School. He is purchasing additional video equipment and software for his film study class to expand their ability to create, edit, and make videos. The next award goes to Austin Ardrin from Montgomery Central. Austin is creating a tranquil school aquarium. If anyone's ever sat and watched an aquarium, it can be a very soothing experience. So that is what he's creating for his school. And our last recipient is rather unique. She is one of four students to ever receive an MCF grant. She is Elizabeth Zhang from Blacksburg High School, and she is requesting funds and resources to establish a third science Olympiad team for Blacksburg High School. So these are all the grants coming from the Corning Incorporated Foundation. And thank you, Rachel, for being here with us. All right, next, so this grant, we also have what we call an emergency travel fund, and the idea here is to help groups who may need to have travel funds they did not anticipate or that their school was not able to fund for them. This year, we are granting this award, along with some additional MCEF funds, to Catherine Davis at Blacksburg High School for expenses for her students to attend and compete in the Junior Science Academy at the state and hopefully national level. The next one is a very special award. A lot of people don't know this, but you can, if you're an MCPS employee, you can actually donate directly to the MCF through payroll deduction. Every dollar goes to this grant. We charge no fees, we have no overhead associated with this grant. So, a small group of employees who are still donating pulled enough this year to fund an entire grant, and this one is going to Brandy Ferguson at Prices Fork Elementary School, and she is putting together a School, and she is putting together a whiteboard and supplies for an interactive and collaborative math station for her students. Next, I would like to call up Susan Miller. Susan, of course, is a retired MCPS teacher and also a longtime former, but former, MCEF board member. She's also worked for many years with Radford University, and I believe she knows Dr. Dunleavy well. And every year, she always sponsors a grant for us, even though she's not on our board anymore, and we greatly appreciate it. Her award this year goes to Jamie Hutchinson at Auburn Elementary School to purchase supplies in order to integrate art into daily classroom lessons, which will provide a more interactive and hopefully stimulating way of learning the daily lessons outside of our class. All right, the next set of awards actually come from my husband and me. He would have been here tonight, but he's home really sick, and you really didn't want him here, trust me. I often joke, if you've been to any of these awards before, you know, people tell you to put your money where your mouth is. I put my husband's money where my mouth is. That's why he really should be here. But we have an endowment for the MCEF, and we also donate directly, and these grants all come from those funds. The first one goes to Hannah Hill at Blacksburg Middle School. Hannah is going to purchase journaling supplies, not only to help her students improve their writing skills, but to allow them to journal about those things that might affect their mental health. And so it's an opportunity to both address mental health and writing at the same time. The next award goes to a two-time previous recipient, Candace Johnston from Christiansburg Primary School, and Candace is going to use her funds to purchase kindergarten sensory bins. These are little bins that they can sit down and have manipulatives and things in it that they can do to use all of their senses in learning on their own. The next award goes to Marcy Repas from Price's Fork Elementary School. Marcy wants to do a choice-based art curriculum where her students actually get to help design the curriculum and their own art projects. And lastly, under this category, this is a collaborative effort between Dr. Robert Johnson at Blacksburg Middle School and Ms. Gina Chandler, representing the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. They are teaming together to form a mentorship program that will teach young middle schoolers leadership skills. So moving on to a similar group of grants, these are actually funded by the Intuitive Foundation. Intuitive is the company that my husband works for, and we actually have several board members who have relatives that work for Intuitive, including Dr. Breagan, that we didn't know whose daughter works for them in California. Total coincidence. But they offer a matching program, so when employees donate through their portal, they will match at 100%. And so these actually came from the foundation, from matches to donations made by us board members and our spouses and relatives who are employees at Intuitive Surgical. The first one goes to Sheri Vaughn at Auburn Elementary School. She is going to purchase supplies to promote first-grade science investigation skills. So instead of just learning science, you actually learn how to investigate it. The next one goes to Helen Fatinos, and this is actually jointly funded by the Intuitive Foundation and the Community Foundation. Helen is the administrator for gifted programs and the governor's school program. Last summer, she did a small sort of test run during summer school to do sort of like summer coding, but she will be able to use these funds to do an entire summer coding camp this summer. The next person I'd like to recognize, and if Alex Lucas is here from Member One, did Alex make it? Come on up, Alex. So this is a little bit of a surprise for this grant recipient. She's getting two checks tonight. One is the grant she applied for to us. This is, by the way, this Lorraine Hedgepath from Blacksburg Middle School, if you want to come up, Lorraine. So she's not only receiving the grant from us, which was to fund autonomous robot steam kits, but she also secured a donation from Member One Credit Union to purchase breakout boxes. So she actually gets two checks tonight, and we want to thank Member One for stepping up to provide additional supplies. And I should also point out, Lorraine is a three-time previous MCEF grant recipient. So I won't say I want to save the best for last, they're all wonderful, but I saved a really special one for last. If Lynn Margheim is here.
Lynn, did you make it? Yes, I thought so.
So this is Lynn Margheim. She was the wife of Dr. Dale Margheim, who passed away earlier this year, a longtime MCPS employee, principal, and leader. When we, one of the things we do in our grant committee is we have to take the money and the sponsors and match it with the grants, and we do the best we can because we're not a donor-advised fund. So we do this, and we try to match well what the donors would like to see funded. This one, we didn't realize just how well we did on it, and let me explain why. So our recipient is Lee Borts from Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. Her request was to buy books to expand students' vocabulary in the new science curriculum. When she got her email and acceptance, we received this back from her, and I'd like to read it to you, and she doesn't know I'm doing this either, so, sorry, Lee. "It is with great appreciation and warm regards that I accept funds to fulfill my grant, building vocabulary with science content reading, with funding from the Dr. Dale Margheim Memorial. Dr. Margheim hired me as a new teacher just out of student teaching. My first job was as a long-term special education substitute at Shawsville Elementary School, as I had graduated in December 1998 and just moved to Montgomery County from Richmond, Virginia. He then hired me on as a full-time teacher, and the following year, and I have been with Montgomery County ever since. He was instrumental in growing my vision as an educator, supporting me as a new teacher, and modeled lifelong learning as he ran small groups with me while researching the impacts of SOLs in our school system for his dissertation. He was always a supportive leader and an inspiring voice. His impact was vast. I am beyond humbled to be the first recipient of this grant." Thank you, Lee. Stories like that and the outstanding educators and student in front of you now are the reason we, the volunteers of the MCEF, do what we do. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share these awards with you, and congratulations to all of our 2024 grant recipients.
This is what we want to try to do here. So the school board would like to take a break. We're going to roll down through that side door right there. We'd like to greet everyone who just won a grant, and also the students of the month that were just here. So anyone who wants to come up to the front there and let us greet you, we'll roll right down there and see you.
And we will do our photo after you have your opportunity to meet everyone. Thank you.
All right, everybody, we're going to get back after it here. It's definitely my favorite part of our meetings, getting the opportunity to come down there and greet folks, and especially when we have such an awesome collection of people at our meetings. So that's a good tradition we started. Let's keep that one going. All right, our next agenda item is public address. We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about education matters in this community. As a reminder, the board sets aside 30 minutes to start our public address. We have the option to extend in 30-minute increments, which Ms. Osborne will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after 90 minutes, the board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional 30-minute session at the end of the business meeting. The clock continues through applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers who get to address the board. I'll call each speaker up by name in the order that they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. The board does not respond to speakers during public address. Screens will show when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when time is up. Please state your name and the area of the county you live in. And the first speaker tonight is Kelly Brennan, followed by Anna Vijayan.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Brennan, and I live in Reiner. I'm here tonight to revisit the, talked about hate speech policy. You know, there's been a lot of hand-wringing about violating First Amendment rights, but I really just don't think that's an issue because we already have code of conduct policies which address bullying and taunting and name-calling and all of those sorts of things. The only thing really lacking in that policy is using the word racial slur, and we could easily do that without substantially changing the policy that is in place. And really, it's about, you know, it's like Policy 7.3-1, Student Code of Conduct. Item 3 is bullying and bias-based behavior. So, you know, already we're dealing with that, at least at the policy level. So I think we could easily change the policy by including the word racial and ethnic slur. And, you know, just as we did with the cell phone policy, which was already in the code of conduct, we pulled it out and made it a separate policy. We could do the same thing with Item 3, just to emphasize the importance of the way we treat each other. And that's what this is really about. You know, this arose because of the increased use of the N-word in our schools, and that shouldn't be happening. But no bias-based behavior or mistreatment of one another should be happening. So again, if we, if we just attend this straightforward manner, it's a very simple thing, and we could have this policy in place by January. It's already in place, we could just update it by January. Then that would be behind us on the policy front, but of course, there's the actual difficulty of implementing policies, which we know exists. And that's something that we're working on with the pilot programs at some of the schools. So I think, let's just get this hate speech policy, and we don't know how to call it that, on the books, emphasize it, and move forward with addressing the behavior issues that are behind that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brennan. Next up is Anna Vijayan, followed by Carol LaHausse.
Hi, my name is Anna Vijayan. I live in District A, and I'm the vice chair of the Gifted Advisory Committee. I'll be here for the official presentation later tonight, but I also wanted to take a moment to address you directly with my personal take on the GAC recommendations this year. The first recommendation is to strongly encourage all gifted resource teachers, classroom teachers with gifted clusters, and administrators to participate in PD in the understanding and instruction of gifted students. Note that the Outside Consultants 2022 Review of Gifted Services and Program stated that campus-level professional development by the GRT is not a substitute for systemic planning and presentation. Systemic presentation demonstrates a policy of Systemic presentation demonstrates a policy of consistent performance expectation for all campuses. Ms. Fatinos and the gifted staff have prepared and presented multiple informative engaging PD sessions in the past year. My understanding, however, is that attendance at these sessions is not what it could be. That is, many teachers with gifted clusters are not choosing to participate. The 2021 GSE report pointed out inconsistencies in instruction for elementary gifted students. In my opinion, all elementary and middle school classroom teachers who have gifted students in their classrooms should be required to participate in at least one PD session with gifted staff. It's that important that these teachers understand gifted students and their needs. Please find a way to ensure that all classroom teachers who teach gifted students participate in PD that gives them the baseline knowledge they need to truly understand and engage these students. The second recommendation, in short, we still need more gifted staff. I truly appreciate you restoring a gifted resource teacher position this year. However, the Outside Consultants 2016 report recommended that MCPS have one GRT at each elementary school for full-time services. We still have two GRTs splitting their time between multiple elementary schools this year, even with the additional staff. We now also have additional needs due to the implementation of the Discovery Program, which is an exciting new program designed to increase equity in the gifted identification process. Specifically, this program introduces all first graders to the types of thinking that they will need to engage in to demonstrate giftedness and be identified. Many students are not exposed to such different kinds of thinking outside of school, and this puts them at a disadvantage when it comes to identification. Currently, every first-grade classroom is getting intervention through the Discovery Program once per month. But this is a stretch for gifted staff, and the program would be that much more effective if it could be expanded to grades K through 2, something that's being planned. Which can, and this can only happen if additional gifted staff are hired. Please make room in your budget for additional gifted staff to increase equity in both gifted services programming and the gifted identification process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vajean. Next up is Carol LaHaus.
Thank you. I'm Carol LaHaus from Reiner. I just wanted to come and talk to you all. Anna was just talking about funding needs for gifted students. Of course, there's always funding needs. We've seen the severe shortage for students with disabilities in the past. And I just wanted to let you all know that Congress has never fully funded their commitment to disabled students or for Title I students. And a number of our schools do get Title I support for reading. So in 1965, Title I was established. In 1975, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act was established. And since that time, they have never been fully funded. The intent of Congress was to fund about 40% of the cost of those, but in reality, both laws have only been funded at about 13%. And so I think we have a real opportunity, if we push our legislators, to say that there's nothing more important than the education of our youth and being able to provide services, especially to students who may be disadvantaged, is crucial. And so I wanted you to think about having a board endorsement for support of Congress in fully funding both those programs, which could really help our schools. And, you know, along those lines of creating more inclusion and advantages for all of our students, I really hope that we can continue to think outside the box about programs, like some of our robotics programs have really provided opportunities for students to come together as teams. And so, you know, if you're a great computer coder and you want to program the robot, great. If you're really good at, you know, hands-on construction skills and can do the welding or, you know, design and build these things, great. But if you just are good at social media and could promote and advertise and fundraise for your program, you know, you could be on the team too, so you don't have to be a coder to be an essential part of the robotics team. And I think we've had some of those organizations really create wonderful structures for our students to come together and really value the diverse skills that each group could bring, each individual could bring. And so I think anything that we can think about in terms of, you know, whether it would be school gardens where we're providing food that could be used in the cafeterias, or any kind of programs where we could see students collaborate more and, you know, come together with diverse sets of skills, I think could be really, really helpful in this sort of inclusion. And I can send you information on those two acts before Congress now. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Haus. And with that, our public address is closed. Next up are the consent items. If no one wishes to move an item out of consent, we will consider these items approved. Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the financial summary report for October 2024?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Ms. Purcell, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Getch.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Ms. Bond, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Getch.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. And now we're to our business meeting portion of the night. First up is the report from the superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Hudson. I only have a few items. First is the hate speech update, hate speech policy. We talked about that for a number of months now. We're gonna present that to the school board for discussion in the first read in January, so that'll be forthcoming, to have our discussion as we move forward with some of the feedback we previously received from our board attorney at our last meeting. We have our capital improvement plan update. We're getting that information from our architect, and I will send that out to the entire school board, school board members tomorrow to digest, to go over it. And that was after getting feedback from our community information gathering sessions. And then we do plan to officially present that in January, after you had some time to generate questions and things like that from myself and the architect. And we will present that at one of the two meetings in January. I wanted to update the school board on the Friends Elementary School Preservation Initiative. I had some conversations with the Christiansburg Institute, and in our conversations there, there's definitely a push, as I heard from the school board as well, is to preserve that building, you know, as the Friends Elementary School on North Franklin Street, out in front of Christiansburg High School. And one of the things that we identified was, as part of the renovation project for Christiansburg High School, it included a renovation of the windows there, which are the original windows, and, you know, they're kind of drafty and not as airtight as we would like them to be. So during that conversation, I reached out to some people in the preservation spaces, and they're gonna give us the exact idea and drawings of what those windows originally looked like, which I think they may be the original windows in there now, but what they look like from the architectural drawings initially. And we're gonna maintain that integrity while still updating them as part of that process of preserving that building for future use that may incorporate portions of it as a memorial, museum, and things like that. So I'm excited that somebody mentioned that, because if we had not mentioned that, we would've went ahead without having that sensitivity to keeping that architectural integrity of the original structure. So, thank you. But it's, we have a lot of history here, and we want to preserve it as much as we can. And that was something that was really easily done in just having some communication with some community members, so I'm excited about that. I have some other things to talk about as official items on the agenda, so I won't waste much more time here. But being as this is our last meeting before the holiday break, I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Bregan. Next up, Jennifer McGee, Anna Vajean, and Helen Fatinos will present the Gifted Advisory Committee's annual report.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Bregan. I am Jennifer McGee, the instructional math coach at CHS and chairperson of the GAC. With me this evening is Anna Vajean, Vice Chair of the GAC, and Helen Fatinos, Administrator of the Gifted Program. It is my pleasure this evening to bring you the annual report from the GAC and review our recommendations. The GAC's scope of work for this year included reviewing the current gifted plan and proposing updates to the 2025-2030 Plan. The first draft of the new gifted plan was submitted to the VDOE for technical review in October, and a draft of this plan will be submitted to the school board in April for review and approval. Recommended updates to the 2025-2030 Plan include new program goals, simplification and clarification in wording, updates to the screening, referral, and identification procedures, clarification in communication procedures, and a standardization of the appeals procedure. These updates will be presented to the school board in April. The progress made includes professional development sessions offered to teachers, secondary services, a GAC annual open house, map assessments for students in grades K through 8, collaboration with the Office of Equity, which included a book study that was for all administrators in the first-grade discovery program. Every class has had at least five lessons, and there's been lots of positive feedback from students and teachers. The recommendations from the GAC include encourage participation by all GRTs, teachers with clusters of gifted students and administrators, and targeted professional development around the understanding and instruction of gifted students. Additionally, the GAC recommends the restoration of an additional GRT position to support the department's equity goals. The table shown includes the total number of GRTs for each year and the total number of identified students. Please note the decrease in the average PTR from the additional position that was added for this school year. The first-grade discovery program allows all students the opportunity to be exposed to critical and creative thinking exercises that are used in the gifted identification process. Additional gifted staff will allow for the expansion of the discovery program to students in grades K and second grade. This will promote a more equitable representation of students identified for giftedness across socioeconomic groups. Mrs. Fatinos, Mrs. Vajean, and myself are available for any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you for that presentation. School board, any questions or comments? Who wants to start?
I would just like to thank you all for your work and your tenacity of making sure this board is listening to you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Supporting all of our students is great.
Dr. Roundtree.
Thanks, and thank you all for the report. With the first-grade discovery program, has there been any feedback on additional identification of students at that age, or?
I'm gonna let Mrs. Fatinos answer that question.
Sorry, can you say that again?
Has there been any, is there any feedback on, with the addition of the first-grade discovery program, have we been identifying students due to that program? Or do we have an increase from last year?
So I don't have that data yet, because we don't look at first graders till the spring.
Yeah.
What we did do is a pre-assessment in September, so in the hopes of being able to capture some data, growth data, regardless of ID, like I would love to show, you know, quantitatively, that there is growth data. I do have qualitative data, in that when I walk into a classroom, they go, "Oh, the brain lady's here." My most favorite part, though, is hearing from teachers. "I can't believe my kids can think this way." I love watching my kids think this way. "You have changed the way I'm talking to my kids." So I think qualitatively, we're making a difference. You know, most of us have been able to go into each first-grade classroom five to six times since September. So I think, you know, the second semester, you know, doubling that is gonna make a big difference just on how teachers see their children, how students see themselves. Will we see a jump, big jump, in ID at this point? I don't know. I will be back in April to let you know, though. Okay?
All right, sounds good. Thanks.
Great. Ms. Purcell? Ms. Bond? Ms. Parton?
Yeah, so thank you guys so much for the information. Really excited for you expanding this program. Dr. Roundtree kind of touched on what I was going to ask about starting that discovery at the lower levels. Something that wasn't asked, though, is there something specific which you may know or may not know yet that you look for at that grade level that might incorporate into someone being thought of to be put into this program? Or have you gotten to that point yet?
We have test scores we look at, so map scores. You know, we're looking at friends scoring in the top 10% of the nation. But then there's those, like, non-tangibles, right? So for instance, you give a student a paper with some squiggles on it, and you say, you know, "Finish this drawing." A lot of times, kids are gonna draw separate drawings, but a student who's really thinking differently outside the box is gonna connect those drawings together. Or there's just, like, that little thing that looks different to them. We have kind of a rubric that we're looking for, like, did they expand it, you know, using their words? Did they add humor to it? Did they, you know, add some kind of architectural to it? So we do have something that we can quantify, but when we sit together as a group and we look at each child with a portfolio, and, you know, a group of 10, 12, you know, educated GRTs, you can kind of just pick them out. So it's not something I can point to and say, like, "Here are the five things on this checklist we're looking for." Necessarily, there's just that little sparkle in a kid. And what I like about what we're doing in first grade is that we're giving them those opportunities to show us their sparkles, because a map test, not everybody's gonna shine on that. And, you know, before, we would go into a classroom one time, two times, for maybe 30 minutes. "Here's this random lady, maybe you're having a bad day, maybe you weren't there because you were getting pulled for some other service." Now, we're coming in twice a month. We're giving those kids that time to get to know us, to get to know what kind of thinking that we're looking for, and be able to have consistent sort of results, instead of just this one-and-done or two times.
Yeah, that's great. I'm glad to see it going down to that level, too, because I know, or I've been told by some of the people in that department that at each level, it's different.
It is.
To try to pick it out. And someone may start there, but then they may not always finish there. So you guys are so good at what you do, and for giving the teachers what they need to be looking for to help you guys out with that, so.
Right, I'm just excited, too. It helps everyone. You know, you may not require gifted services to be successful, but this kind of critical and creative thinking skills are great for all students. So I'm excited to simplify that for every student and for every teacher.
Great, I am too. Thank you guys so much.
Dr. Yizri.
Yeah. Thank you, and thanks to everyone in the GAC. I know this is a lot of work. These plans, particularly the five-year plans, are extensive. One of the questions that I have is about services at the middle school level. Because the Discovery, I mean, this is really wonderful. I know in the requests for additional staffing at the primary level, and so you're really attentive to those needs. I know at the high school level, we've got so many opportunities for AP classes, dual enrollment, et cetera. One of my concerns is what's happening at the middle school level, because we have gifted students who are in classrooms with 30 students, I know. And so I'd like to, as you're working on that plan, I want to make sure that we beef that up, because if you're looking at our performance at the middle schools, it's not where it should be, and I would love to see that addressed through the plan as you're working on it. I don't know if you could speak to that now?
Happy to. It's in our program goals, is to continue to develop that. We're piloting a program at Blacksburg where all gifted students are clustered during their IE time, so they're getting direct lessons from their gifted resource teacher three, four, or five days a week. So hopefully, I can expand that to all four middle schools. I know we're talking about some scheduling changes, so still just trying to keep that in mind for our students. And then also working to make sure Honors English and Honors, specifically Honors English, is truly an honors class. So I'm working with those teachers right now to, like, create what does an honor syllabus look like? That's different than just an on-grade-level English syllabus. And then just providing PD for those teachers.
Okay.
All of that is in the Gifted 2530 Plan.
Okay, great. And that IE period, that's the enrichment period? Yeah, one of the challenges with that is that if they're involved with other things or have other obligations, it can eat into that.
So this year, at Blacksburg Middle School, I can't speak for all middle schools, but at Blacksburg Middle School, they are all intentionally grouped. And so everyone's going to where they need for their academic enrichment or intervention during that time. And so then our GRTs are able to push lessons to those teachers, or they're pulling the students to their classrooms. So they, I mean, it's 25 minutes, but it's 25 minutes they didn't have before, consistently, so.
I'd love to see more attention at the middle school level.
Yeah.
Yeah, in addition to that, I mean, I think that's great, but I just don't think that's enough for our students.
If you give me more GRTs, I'll give you more service. We'll end dealing on the side.
Thank you.
Board, any other comments? Okay, great, thank you so much. All right, next up, Helen Fotinos. Hey there.
Hi, short commute.
Yeah, all right. So we'll present an update on the dual-language immersion program.
Well, good evening again, and thank you for your time. Thank you, Dr. Bragan, for your time. After my last presentation with you, I came away with feeling like we wanted a, a community survey and a little bit more information about a budget for this program. And so I worked with Ms. Emily Altizer and Mr. Andrew Webb to send a survey to our entire sort of elementary community, asking for feedback on our potential program, and I have some information for you. So we sent the survey out in English and in Spanish. Every question was written in English and in Spanish, and I asked someone who speaks Spanish to make sure that my Spanish was correct. So they didn't have to use any kind of translator to access the survey, which I felt like was really important. So everyone that spoke English or Spanish had direct access to that, and then anyone who spoke another language, Google Translate would translate that for them. This was sent to all elementary families. Mrs. Altizer and I also went to the English class that's held twice a week at the YMCA and directly presented to those Spanish-speaking families just to ask for their feedback. We gave them QR codes, we posted flyers in that area where they spent time. So trying really hard to get as much community response as possible. So key takeaways, we had over 600 respondents in our survey in about the three-week period that we sent it out. Half of the respondents were from Blacksburg, primarily English-speaking families. And about 90% of the people who responded said they either yes, they were in favor, or maybe they would consider enrolling their students in this program. So we did get responses from every strand, which I think is wonderful. And I was shocked and amazed at how many languages are spoken at home in our community. So you have a, a link to this in your packet, I hope, and if not, ask me again, and I will send it to you, so you can see just the smaller breakdowns of those languages, if you would like. I provided you with just like a little sampling of the comments here, but again, on this slide deck is a link to all of the responses, so if you would like to read all 600 responses. Like I said, primarily, they were positive. You know, lots of people were interested in it. We did have some people that said, "No, thank you." They were not interested in this program, and that is fine. This program is completely optional, so no one needs to participate if they don't want to. And then, you know, a few maybes. So I will let you read those at your leisure. But again, if you wanna access all of those, they are available. And then, just really quickly, this is broad strokes of a budget that what I'm, will be asking Dr. Bragan to include in your budget proposal in the next month. But as best as I can tell from the research I have done, the conferences I've been to and the schools I have visited, this is what we would need to sort of get this off the ground. Now, the biggest ticket item is staffing, and $60,000 of that would be recruitment fees if we aren't able to hire internally. So we've already posted a job in the hopes of finding two people that would be interested. So if we are able to hire internally, $60,000 of that would not be needed. What I did also ask for in that budget was two bilingual paraprofessionals. So that's another just big chunk of the money. When I visited the schools in Asheville, when I visited schools in Harrisonburg, every one of the K-1 classrooms had a paraprofessional in the classroom with them speaking Spanish to the children. And so that allowed really intensive language centers to happen, where, you know, you can't just send a kindergartner off to do their own work. It's never gonna happen, right? So if we can divide the class into two, or at least into three groups, have one, you know, doing a station, and then two, two other groups being with teachers, we saw a lot more effective instruction that way. So, any questions for me about any of that?
Okay, thank you for that presentation. School Board, any questions?
I can start. So the staffing is for two classrooms, is that correct?
Initially, two classrooms. So what my hope would be is to add two kindergarten classes in 25-26, and then we would have two kindergarten, two first grade, two kindergarten, two first grade, two second grade. The reasoning behind the two classes is if we do have attrition for, you know, people moving away, that when we do get to a point where, you know, the classes have nine, 10, 12 students, and then we could combine them into one class.
And then the staffing, so in the staffing bucket here, $60,000 is for recruitment, so we're down to like 130?
It's 30, $30,000 a teacher to recruit a teacher using Participate Learning, which is the company. So if we don't have to use them, cut that.
Right. And that 130 includes the overhead associated with teachers, so retirement, everything? Or is that just base salary for that 130?
We would also pay their salary, but that, we would already be needing to hire a teacher, 'cause all these teachers would be, you know, sort of a replacement. We wouldn't, it wouldn't be creating new staffing positions, it would just be instead of. So the $30,000 is truly just the recruitment fee, relocation fee, and support of their J-1 visa. Then we would also have to pay their salary.
And all benefits associated with this? Sorry, that's what I was asking, is the benefits in this number as well?
If they're, I would have to ask HR. I know there's some funniness, if they're here on a J-1 visa, we don't pay VRS. There's a few things we don't pay. So it'll be slightly less than a traditional teacher's salary.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you.
Okay, we'll change your order, Ms. Franklin.
So, yeah, I think this is wonderful. But I have to say, with a couple of people that I have had conversations with don't understand the value.
Sure.
And that is disheartening to me, because we don't live in isolation. And the more tools we can give our students, the better off everybody will be. So I hope that we are able to pull this together for our community.
I hope so, too. I had the opportunity to share with Prices Fork Elementary School this morning that they are our intended site. And I did have some questions, you know, why aren't we just, especially with our L students, why aren't we just making sure they speak English? And so I did have the opportunity to share with them a little bit about what this does for all students, our L students and our English-speaking students, our special ed students, our gen ed, our gifted students. Like, this is a good program for all students. And so I'm glad to hear that you're also sharing that with our community. I think it's just gonna take a minute. And, you know, I think in three or four years, when people see how successful these students are compared to their other classmates, how much higher their testing data is than their other classmates, how much more engaged these are, I think we're, the momentum will build, but we just have to be patient.
And these students are gonna be talking to their friends, and they're gonna wanna, how do you say that? Right, what does that mean?
Exactly. When I was in Asheville, we met with some middle school students, and they were like, "It's like our secret club. If we don't want other friends to know we're talking about them, we talk about them in Spanish." I was like, "Well, friends, let's not talk about each other." But it is, it's a, it's a, it's a superpower to be bilingual, so.
Dr. Gettrick.
Thank you so much. So the, you've already selected the school?
Yeah, well, pending everyone's support, we felt like Prices Fork, all the research and digging that I've done, that for our first site, Prices Fork will be the best site. And then, you know, within five years, it would be my goal for every strand to have one of these sites.
Okay, is that where you got the strongest community feedback in favor?
Yes, and the highest amount of Spanish-speaking families.
Okay. I saw in one of the comments that there was a question of, like, students from other schools being able to attend. Can you address that issue?
I would love to see that Prices Fork fills both of these classrooms, right? Because then they're believing in what's happening in their school. I do not know if that will be possible. So if there are two classes and we don't have seats filled, we would certainly open it up to any community members. We would have to work on, you know, what are our requirements? Are you providing transportation? You know, do we have to have some kind of, like, good attendance requirements? The same we would have if anyone was transferring to another school. I would love to see two full classes of excited, engaged students that wanna be there. I hope we have too many. I hope 60 people wanna do it, and we have to have a lottery system, so. But yes, I, I think Dr. Bragan and I are open to anyone from the community participating, as long as we're giving preference to Prices Fork to start with, 'cause it is their school.
Okay, great. And I guess the other question is, like, we've asked you for more information, and, and you've done a lot of research, and I know that this took a lot of effort, so thank you very much for doing that. So what I'm hearing is that the administration really thinks this is feasible, that we should do it, there, that this should not be a, there shouldn't be a budgetary issue, that this makes sense for the district? Is that the, is that the message that I'm getting here?
I can't speak for the district, but I can speak for the superintendent, and that our plan was to present this tonight, as Ms. Fotinos did a lot of the research, Fotinos. And to then, to include that in our budget request, that's gonna come in the first meeting in January. So we would love to move ahead full steam, and I think the unofficial feedback that I saw from the school board was that y'all were in favor. So, you know, the question becomes, when we put it on the school budget, and people are asking, "Well, why is this increase for $223,000, what is that for?" And we, we explain it, and y'all support it, and we move forward, and hopefully, we get the monies that we asked for from the Board of Supervisors. And I'm excited about this, and I think we got a lot of momentum going in the right direction. And one of the other reasons that Prices Fork is an ideal school is for their large Latino population now, that this will not only serve the bilingual population, but we're servicing some of our ESL students' needs, and a bilingual program is the best way to meet their needs as well, if you can do it.
Yeah, and what's the percentage of students that are Latinx at that, in the school?
About 12% of those students speak Spanish.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Pardon?
I didn't have any questions, but thanks for all the research. You've done a lot of work and a lot of traveling, so I appreciate that. I may have more questions down the line, but what you're saying makes total sense, and I appreciate everything you're doing to move forward on this, so thank you.
Ms. Bond?
Okay, well, you know, I'm definitely a supporter. But I can't remember, did you, and I know you've done tons of research yourself, and I appreciate that, but did you share that you have, like, a, a school that you've looked at their program and maybe sistered through, or do we, I mean?
Yeah, so I visited Asheville, Buncombe County Schools, and they've had a program about 12 years.
Okay.
And they have, we went to four different sites, two elementary schools and two middle schools, and saw sort of the whole gamut of what that looks like there. And then two weeks ago, we went to Harrisonburg City Schools. They have 11 elementary schools, and they all have sites at their schools. And we were able to see that program K-5, pre-K-5 there. And then also, they have a really unique middle school model where you can enroll in content in Spanish. So you can, you know, your history class in seventh grade can be in English or in Spanish. So we were able to see that as well.
Right.
And the Buncombe County Schools, they have what they call a 90-10 model. If you remember, I shared with you that, like, in kindergarten and first grade, they get almost all their instruction in Spanish, and then you sort of ease into English. And Harrisonburg City Schools, they do a 50-50 model, so half their days in English, half their days in Spanish. So we were able to kinda see the difference between those and talk to the teachers and, and what was working for them. It was interesting, the Harrisonburg Schools said they really wished they had that 90-10 model, that they felt like that would be better for their students. And then I've also been able to be on the phone with Prince William County, Loudon County, Fairfax County, Virginia Beach, to talk to those directors and hear, you know, what's working in their schools and what's not. So I really have talked to a lot of Virginia schools. A lot of schools on that eastern side of the state are doing this program and doing it well. So I think it's our turn, right?
Right, I just, you know, we've learned at different conferences that people are more, are willing to definitely share with you the negatives as well as the positives. And that's how we learn, and don't maybe make some mistakes right out of the, out of the gate. So I appreciate that, that's, that's important, so thank you.
Ms. Rousseau?
I'll also thank you, Mrs. Fotinos, for all of your hard work in putting all this together. It's incredibly exciting to bring something like this to our community. And if I understand what you were saying, there's, there's no other dual-language immersion program in southwest Virginia? So just Harrisonburg and?
Yeah, anything west of Henrico and Harrisonburg, all the way to Asheville, we would be it.
Wow, that's, that's really incredible. I apologize for not knowing this about Prices Fork Elementary, but how many kindergarten classrooms do they have?
They have three right now, three very large kindergarten classrooms. So I think they're sitting between 22 and 24 students per class. So, you know, they could have split those maybe into four, but I, I'm not gonna talk about the reason behind that, 'cause I don't know why. But I think it would be very natural to add a fourth class, looking at their preschool, you know, who's coming in this year. And, you know, if you have 75-ish kids already in kindergarten, likely you're gonna have similar numbers in preschool coming up.
Yeah, I was just curious what the dispersment would be of the kids in the language program and the kids that would be in the traditional program.
You know, there's a lot of unknowns right now, you know. Next steps for me with everyone's, you know, approval here, a blessing, would be to start talking with technology about what does the kindergarten registration process look like, and how do we fit into that? And then I would plan on visiting all the local preschools and talking to parents about this opportunity. And then, again, intentionally going to those Prices Fork kind of preschool roundups that they do with their different communities to talk to those families, and then trying to work at the school in any kind of, like, family engagement nights to be there and be present and answer questions for the, the Prices Fork families. And then again, coming up, you know, Mr. Webb and I have talked about creating a new page on our website to be as informative as possible, creating a flyer that we can have put out, creating a space in the Prices Fork office where we can start highlighting this, so people can, you know, start thinking about it and asking questions. So next steps would be what Andrew calls a comms plan. Sounds fancy, a communication plan. And, and I think we'll know more maybe in March or April about how many people are interested.
Excellent. And my last question, and this might be more for Dr. Bragan, where are this budget item to not be funded or fully funded? Are there soft-money avenues to kind of launch and then demonstrate so that we can secure more robust funding or expansion of the program?
I have been working with Dr. Dunleavy to look for any kind of grant funding that we can apply for, just for that reason, to say, like, "Look, here, this is worth our time." And of course, you know, we'll make adjustments as needed. We're teachers, we do that, right?
Thank you so much.
Student reps, any, any comments or questions on this program? Okay, that's cool. Board members, any other comments?
Yeah, just a quick one. So the, the immersion program's great, and I'm, I'm very excited that this is coming to Prices Fork. What are the plans for bringing linguistics to middle school at earlier, earlier grades in sixth and seventh grade?
Through this program or just in general?
In general. Or, or through this program, whichever you wanna answer.
I can only control what I can control.
Okay.
So you can have that conversation with Dr. Bragan. But my thought at this point, and you know, this is six years away, is that we would create, like, an elective. So just like band, or art, or, you know, robotics, students that have been in this program would get to choose, do they wanna go to an elective every day to continue their language acquisition? You know, maybe there'd be book studies, or, you know, field trips, or cultural events, you know, making it fun and light, and making it an elective, but then they're also still continuing to practice their language skills, so that when they go to high school, everything I've read, most of the students that come out of programs like this can jump right into Spanish IV. So they go Spanish IV, AP Spanish, earn a seal of bilinguism, maybe explore another language. So, you know, if they already are fluent in Spanish in eighth grade, maybe they jump to French, or Latin, or German. Or maybe they're jumping online and doing a Mandarin class. You know, once you've already acquired two languages, it's much easier for your brain to acquire a third language. That is what I can control. Do I think there should be more language acquisition at the middle school? Yes.
Yes, I think it would be interesting to, to, to look at what we can do as far as putting those electives in place so that they're ready when those students are in fifth grade and ready to go to sixth grade, so that we're not trying to put together a program in one year. And then we can also provide our students that are currently in middle school with electives for foreign language.
I think as Ms. Fotinos said, you know, that we'll, we have time to plan that, and we'll make sure it's, we're ready when we get to that point. You know, one of the surprising parts for me when we visited the schools down in North Carolina was I would, I thought that it would continue in the same vein in middle school. And in middle school, it really became an elective class. It wasn't a total immersion moving forward, which was surprising to me. And they had reasons why they did that, and they thought it was, and it's been successful for them in the past. But those are the things, I think, as Ms. Fotinos said, as we create anything new, we don't know what we don't even, we don't know yet, right? And we did hear some other people, and they tried to steer us away from some of their potential pitfalls and things that they learned, but we still don't know what it's gonna like, look like here, and what's gonna be implemented. For example, one of the things that I thought, and I like to think I'm fairly well-versed in this, we created a similar program in New Jersey, where I came from, was we did 50-50.[1758.18] we created a similar program in New Jersey where I came from, was we did 50-50. We thought that was the best way to go. Everyone we talked to said, "No, in your first three years, you need to do 90-10 in order to be effectively bilingual by the time the kids get out of 5th grade." And it was interesting because when we talked to the children, they said the same thing. And they picked up English. It wasn't like they were struggling with that at any point. And they were middle school at that time, right, 7th, 8th graders, I think we talked to. So, it, it, what you said, Dr. Roundtree, is really important though. Every little thing we do, there's more ramifications and implications that go all the way through with these children as they progress to our system that we got to be aware of and we got to plan for.
What I really liked about the Harrison City Schools was you could take science and social studies in Spanish, which is amazing, if you can find a teacher who's licensed and bilingual. I mean, Harrisonburg, they have a large population of Spanish-speaking individuals in the town, so they have a bigger draw. But I think our program's going to be so amazing, people are going to want to move here and work for us, so.
That's right. Thank you.
Yep.
So, with that said, maybe we should look at some type of resource to help the teachers that we have get their qualifications in the courses that we would like them to be in.
I agree. I had a conversation with an aide at Price's Fork this morning who is fluent in Mandarin, and she said, "How do I become a teacher so that I can teach students if you have a Mandarin Academy?" And so I said, "Well, I have the person for you to talk to. By the time we get a Mandarin Academy off the ground, maybe she'll be licensed."
But the grow-your-own idea, Ms. Franklin, is a great one. We, we put out some feelers for speech-language therapists. As y'all know, we're having difficulty getting those positions filled. You know, in a partnership, we would help them pay for their master's degree where they would commit to being with us for a period of five years or so. And I've had three people reach out to me and are expressed interest in that already. So, that's the way to go if we can do it. Get our own people, train them up, maybe help them along with the costs and get a commitment from them. And I think that's the best long-run solution for any program, especially this one.
Cool. So it sounds like there's, there's positive energy from this board, but the next real step is, is getting a budget approval for next year, right? So, unless there's any other action that you think we can take in advance of that? Okay. Great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next up, the proposed math textbook adoption committee is presented for board approval. Ms. Jennifer Wall, our administrator of mathematics curriculum, is available for questions.
Good evening.
Evening.
Board, any questions on the committee? The committee recommendation?
I'll just ask a couple of quick questions. Thank you so much for putting together this committee and for all the people who have agreed to be on the committee for, for doing that work. Just two really quick questions. One, are there any parents on the list who are also MCPS employees?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, good. I mean, I shouldn't say good, but I was just going to recommend if there were any MCPS employees to identify them as well, because that's one of the critiques that I've heard in the past of, about some of these committees, that they're, they're overstaffed by, or overrepresented by MCPS employees. So I'm, I'm glad to see strong support from parents. The second is that, are the parents who've agreed to be on the committee, are they aware that the meetings are going to likely take place, I'm assuming, during business hours? Because I think that that could be...
So, thank you for this, putting this committee together. And I know committees are hard, but I am, I am very pleased to see what great teachers we have represented on here for especially what, what this is in reference to. But I'm also glad to see the diversity within the districts being a little closer and having more equal representation. So that, that makes me feel good too. So, thank you very much and I wish you success.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bond, anything? Ms. Purcell? Dr. Roundtree?
Just thanks for putting all this together. This is going to be a lot of people to manage. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin, you good? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed math textbook adoption committee as presented? So moved.
Second.
Dr. Gitcher and Ms. Franklin? Any further discussion? Great. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitcher?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next up, the proposed secondary English Language Arts Textbook Adoption Committee is presented for board approval. Dr. Barbara Wickham, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, is available for questions. Board, any questions? Okay. Okay, cool. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed secondary English, English Language Arts Textbook Adoption Committees as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Bond? Any further discussion? Okay. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitcher?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for walking up. All right, next up, the MOA for pre-kindergarten is presented for board approval. Do I have a motion to approve the agreement as presented? Ms. Franklin and Ms. Bond? Any discussion?
It's how we get things started. So, thank you.
I do have a question. When I read this, I wasn't sure of the context. Can you explain a little bit more about the agreement?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, the school board has an agreement with the Montgomery County Educational Association. And part of that agreement for elementary school teachers is that they will receive 85 minutes of planning time duty-free, you know, to plan and use that for the needs of preparing for the lessons or whatever that may entail for them in their daily days as a teacher. One of the things that we neglected, we, meaning myself and, and the committee members who helped develop this, was that the preschool schedule is a lot different than the elementary schedule for our teachers and for our students as well. And when we were looking at doing this and working on the 85 minutes for elementary, it was easy to make sure, well, relatively easy to make sure we could ensure that our teachers got that time for preparation and planning. It's not as easy for preschool. The preschool schedule is different. And it's harder for us to have those periods of time where the, the preschool teacher's out of the classroom and has an unencumbered duty where we can get that time for her. So when we had those conversations, and credit to the MCA leadership, they were very supportive and very responsive. And we said, "Well, we can't guarantee that because it's hard for us to cover the time and get," you know, the electives for preschool students are typically 30 minutes because they don't have the extension, attention span to go for a 45-minute period like some of our other elementary school students. So the agreement we came up at was, we will guarantee that the preschool teachers will get a 30-minute duty-free time for preparation and a 30-minute lunchtime. And in lieu of that 85 minutes where the collective bargaining guarantees that time for them, the two vol, the two meetings that could potentially be scheduled for them during their planning time of the month will become voluntary unless there's an emergency. In addition to the two meetings that we have scheduled typically after school, again, unless there's an emergency, for those teachers that are giving up that 85-minute planning time, they will be voluntary. We thought that was fair and we thought that was appropriate and we all agreed. We ran it by attorneys on both sides and they put their blessings on it. But the agreement is with the school board and the association, not me. So that's why we presented it.
Okay, great. Thanks. And so the association is 100% behind this agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
And their attorney. Like, we, you know, we didn't just pencil this in together. We came up with the language and we ran it by our school board attorney, and they ran it by theirs.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, board, any other questions? No discussion? You have a motion in a second? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitcher?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up, Dr. Bragan, our superintendent, will provide an update on 504 plan.
Thank you, Chair Hudson. As this board is aware, you know, there's been some concerns about the 504 responsibilities for coordination that fell with our school counselors this year. First thing I want to say is I want to compliment our school counselors for two reasons. One, even though they weren't 100% on board or thought this was the best use of their time, they're doing the job and they're doing it really well. And they're taking it in the professional capacity we would expect of our people. So I applaud them for that. You know, not, not everybody responds in that manner. And the other thing is, I had two meetings with them. I had one recently. I appreciate their willingness to talk and to dialogue, even though this is something that they, again, would, in their best interest and the best time of, use of their time for the counseling purposes for our kids, isn't something that maybe is best suited for their needs. They're, they've come to the table, not with animus or not with anger, but with, "Hey Bernie, Dr. Bragan, whatever, how can we get to the answer? How can we work through this and, and make it work?" And they've been very receptive and they've been understanding. So I appreciate that. So that being said, what I, what I told them is what, what I'll tell you is, we have a plan for next year in our school budget, for this to be a dedicated position, 504 coordinator that will not fall on a school counselor or will not fall solely on a teacher. Because last year, teachers did the majority of this work. And when the caseloads got heavy and we had a lot of meetings, you would have teachers that we would have to get a substitute for because they had meetings all day long. We're taking kids out of the classroom, which we didn't think was an effective use of their time and adversely affected the classroom performance in our students. So, wrongly so, and I'll take full ownership, we thought, "Well, maybe the school counselors could better swing that because their daily schedule isn't as bound to them as a teacher's schedule, right? I got 25, 30 kids coming every period. I got to make that work." Whereas school counselors is typically not that as regimented. That being said, it's not in the best interest to do that because it takes away from the important things that they're doing. So in the short run, BHS right now has a dedicated 504 coordinator who we transitioned over there and is doing a great job, is taking that burden off our counselors, working with the support staff in the counseling office, and that seems to be going well. We have another position on the agenda tonight. You're approving a halftime administrator and a halftime 504 coordinator on the agenda this evening. And that person will most likely go to Blacksburg Middle School and do the same thing that's happening at Blacksburg High School. Christiansburg High School, working with the principal and working with the counselors, they've come up with a plan, starting in the spring semester, to free up one of their teachers' periods during the day where they will have an opportunity to do this work. And that's going to alleviate that concern right now. So, starting in the spring semester, I'm sorry. So that's kind of where we are. We chiaj where the greatest need was and tried to alleviate the greatest concern for the school counselors who had the, the greatest caseload. There are still some other areas where school counselors are performing this work, and in an ideal situation, they wouldn't. So as we plan the budget for next year, the idea is that we have a dedicated 504 coordinator that will service all of these needs, so that it will not fall on school counselors at all. I'm open for questions, but that's an update where we are. And one other thing is, you know, some of the people ask me, "Well Bernie, why, why don't you just do it right now? Get a counselor for everybody?" One is, as much as people don't always understand, we don't have this magic box of money that I can just pull things out of, right? But what we do have is, we have some positions that are unfilled, right? And as time goes on, that money is there. So, we may be able to fund another position in maybe another month that will help alleviate some of the elementary positions, if that makes sense to you. And that would be not from additional monies that I'm just finding. It would be monies for some of the positions that you'll talk about in the staffing update that have gone unfilled, that we budgeted for, that we could use some of those monies. For this year. But for next year, we have a plan. It will be, again, it'll be in, and we'll talk about it when we present the budget to y'all in January.
Okay, thank you, sir. Board, any questions? Discussion?
Just good to hear we have a plan.
Dr. Gitcher?
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm glad you're not just waiting to, until next year. So, I know we're, we're going to talk about the staffing update and I, I'm, I'm glad to hear you're, you're open to reallocating some money. One of the things I noticed is that we're, we're not filling the special ed teacher positions and we have a lot that are open. But also, I can't remember, I think it was over like 300,000 that we had budgeted for stipends to try to attract. Is any of that, if we're, if we're having difficulty of attracting people's positions, you know, what's happening with that money? And can that money, some of that money be allocated so that we're not waiting until next year, that we can more aggressively push in? Because I, I know the counselor, I, I'm sure that they are team players and they're doing what they need to do. But I know that the, the system, it, I, I still have concerns, even if they're being team players, if they're actually able to meet the needs in our, in our buildings.
No, that's fair. We'll, we'll look at all those funds. Dr. Gitcher, the, the majority, and again, I'm, I'm talking off the top of my head and I shouldn't do that with having the numbers in front of me, but the majority of the monies that we allocated for the special ed stipends were for people that were doing the special ed jobs as they were. It wasn't necessarily for all additional people. So a lot of that money is gone, but there may be some left. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So if you were already working as one of the 110 special ed teachers we have, you got that stipend. In addition to people we hired, we offered, we offered that as well. So I'm not sure how much is left, but I'll find out.
Okay.
That's something we could definitely look at.
I just remember that being part of the rationale for the stipend. It wasn't just for new hires, but, you know, I thought that might, I was curious because...
We'll crunch those numbers. There is probably money there. I don't know the exact amount, though.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Board, anything else? Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Next up, Dr. Bragan, will provide an update on retired school security officers.
I'm not sure I've ever talked this much at a meeting so far. You know, I'm going to give a brief presentation on retired school security officers, a proposal that we're putting together. And we'll talk through it and at the end, I'll entertain some questions. But this actually came from a joint effort of working with our local law enforcement, our two towns, as well as our county sheriffs, and some ideas to make sure we have all of our schools fully, fully staffed with armed security guards, if not SRO police officers. So, the question you would ask, right, what is a retired school security officer? And, and basically, I'm not going to read the slides to you, but basically, it's a former law enforcement officer with experience who's retired and has been trained and has all the requisite skills to be an SRO. The difference that changed recently was that when somebody retires from the VRS system, they typically can't work without compromising their retirement, either pausing it or going back into a retirement system. So, the VRS rules recently changed where for retired law enforcement officers, they can still collect their VRS and then work as a retired school security officer. So it's enviable for people that want to do this, that retired relatively young, right, in their 50s or maybe younger, that still want to work and have the capacity to do so. They won't compromise their VRS retirement and they're able to make some extra money doing hopefully something that they would love. So that was a, a change that happened this year that we think may make this a more enviable position than perhaps it was in the past where the retired law enforcement officers would have to give up their pension or pause it in order to do this. All right, so you're asking, "Why does this matter to," you know, that's great, Bernie. You know, you're giving a presentation on retired school officer, officers, what do we care about? Well, one of the problems is, we're having a problem filling all of our positions. Ideally, what we'd like is one SRO in each of the buildings. If you look at it there, we have them at the high schools, we have them at the middle schools, and we have a dedicated, and the, the elementary schools in Christiansburg, as well as Price's Fork Elementary School, which is serviced by the county. But we have four elementaries in Blacksburg that don't have a dedicated school resource officer and would like to do that. So, that's the problem. So, as I said, our goal is to have a dedicated law enforcement officer in each school. But to be an SRO, it can't just be the first guy that comes through the academy. As you know, and, and our positions in law enforcement is no different. There are less people applying for those positions, less people going through the academies, less people that are coming out ready to be law enforcement officers. And even if we had someone that was fresh out of the academy, a young kid that just graduated, they can't become an SRO right away. They have to wait at least two years in order to be eligible to do so. They have to get the trainings. And that's what we would want too. You don't want a newbie coming out and working with our children because it is a little bit different than you would a, a typical police officer. So you want people with more experience. The reason that's a problem is, it takes longer in the pipeline to get people. So even if we had 20 police officers that were in the county or in the towns recently this year, none would be eligible for an SRO for at least two years. So, I'm not sure we can meet the needs for filling those four elementary schools as it is now. All right, I kind of spoke about that already. There's a commitment across the board from the towns and from the law enforcement. Both town police officers and the sheriff's department are committed to doing this. I know our school board is. The Board of Supervisors committed the resources too, last year when there was a question about whether we would move forward or not. But, we don't have the people. So herein lies the rub. So our proposal would be to hire four retired school security officers for the schools that we can't fill. Right now, it doesn't look like, and I don't have a crystal ball, it may change, but it doesn't look like for August, that the town or the county has four SROs that they can't fill. doesn't look like for August, that the town or the county has four SROs that they could dedicate to those four elementary schools. So we would recommend hiring four retired school security officers. And in the event that those elementary schools do get filled, right, or if it happens over a short period of time, move one of those, wherever the need is, the retired school officer, to the high schools. One SRO is great, but having someone else is better for the bigger buildings and the bigger campuses that are hard to cover with just one person. So it wouldn't be like we're wasting money, if at some point, those SRO positions are available for those four elementary schools that are currently uncovered. And in talking with law enforcement, you know, working with police officers is different than teachers, it's different than working with our current administration. I asked them, if we had four retired school security officers, would we need to have a dedicated, you know, retired police leadership position to do that? And in talking with the town, and talking with the sheriff's office, they thought four was manageable. If you were going higher than that, you would need somebody that's retired from law enforcement to lead them, because it is a different, they're different than civilian people. And I mean that in the best sense of the word. So the budget cost of our proposal is 280,000, as it works out there, and these are rough numbers. The idea, we thought, to get enough interest where people would want to do this job, and again, in talking with law enforcement, the sheriff's office, was $50,000 salary. And if you look in there, the estimate for the payroll taxes for those four employees would be that, and for potential benefits, I'm not sure they would need it. Sometimes, law enforcement gets benefits in retirement, sometimes they don't. That may be something that would entice people to do it if they can. So that's on the left side there, the personnel commitment. The other thing, and I did talk extensively with the sheriff about this, we want armed people, and the sheriff's office would work with us, as would the towns, in training them, and making sure they have the required trainings to carry firearms. But also, I was told, we should provide the firearm, and there's a particular kind that we should provide for law enforcement, that's consistent with the sheriffs and the towns, so that we would buy it, and it would be our firearm. That makes sense to me. And then, we would expect, we would pay for the body armor, which is, you know, that we would want all our police officers to wear. And then, training. So, that comes to the total budget of 280,000. Again, the summary basically says that there's a need, we have a commitment, that we want to have the resource officers in each building, but there's a shortage, we can't fill it. This is an opportunity to do that, and it requires that expenditure, funds in our budget to do so. And unless the board tells me otherwise, I'm going to include that in the school budget when we present it in January.
Thank you for that presentation. School Board, any questions? Discussion?
For clarification. So in the four elementary schools where we don't have SROs, if at some point, we do acquire those from Blacksburg, then they would pay for that, just like they're doing now. Everything would go, it wouldn't fall back on us, that all of a sudden, now we're starting to have to furnish our own SROs.
It's a great question. And one of the things I did talk about, again, I can't speak for anything until the board approves anything, but I did briefly talk to Ms. Hill from the county side, and said, well, if this was normally funded by the town or the county, and you know, there was some discussions between the town of Christiansburg and the board of supervisors, and who was going to fund those schools in Christiansburg, and they were able to work some mutual agreement out. And if we're going to fund it, the expectation would be, when I give that budget ask to the board of supervisors, they clearly understand that they should fund it, right? But I can't speak for them, as well as I can't speak for all of you, but that would be the expectation, as you're saying, Ms. Franklin, because now we're bearing the brunt of this budgetary item, which previously was borne by the townships or the county, that we should make sure we get that funding. And all I could do is ask the board of supervisors, I can't speak for them.
I'm just concerned that, as things would go on, eventually, everybody would start rolling onto our budget, and with our equipment requirements, and before we know it, we have our own police department. I'm not interested in that.
I can understand that.
So to build on Ms. Franklin's question, what would be the, I mean, the problem exists because the Blacksburg Town Police Department doesn't have the personnel to have someone at these elementary schools all day. Is there a way to, to ask the town of Blacksburg to fund this on their behalf, on our behalf, so that it isn't a school board responsibility? Or does...
We could do that, and I haven't done that, but we could definitely do that. I don't know if they would agree to that or not, I don't know that, but we could ask that. The only time that that would get muddied, right, is if that, let's say there was an agreement there, and then at some point, whether in the middle of the year, or at the end of the year, wherever that is, that Blacksburg finds an SRO, and has them allocated then for one of the, one or two of the elementaries, then where does that, they take the money away, and then we're left with an unfunded position, or do we just fire that person? Which I don't think is fair to, like, an employee that's, we're going to hire, say, hey, you're going to have this job, but if Blacksburg or the county can come up with somebody, we're going to let you go in two weeks. I don't think that's fair. So that's why we had the proposal worded the way we did. It's a good question, I could ask Blacksburg Town, I don't know what they would say.
But then, wouldn't that go against the fact that it would be our employee opposed to the towns? Yes, if we're not paying for it, yes.
Part of that, wouldn't that kind of...
Potentially, right? Whoever's paying for it would own it, right?
Yeah. Who would be, who would be the boss? Who would be telling what's cordial, what's not? Think that would muddy the waters a little bit?
You're off, Ben.
If it's going to be the same requirements for the security officer as it is for an SRO, what's the difference?
Ms. Franklin, if you don't mind, and the only reason I know is because you know why I know. So, they're two separate things, the school resource officer and the school security officer, and there would be, we would never be responsible for the budgeting of an SRO. So let's say, at some point in time down the line, one of the four schools was able to get an SRO from Blacksburg, since Blacksburg is the one handling that. Or if the county wanted to fund the SRO from any of the localities in the county, that would definitely come out of the law enforcement's budget. The school security officer, however, would be, would be our, would be our employee in our budget. There is a very distinct difference between an SRO and a school security officer in that sense, and as well as training, and what they, what they can do, and what they're there for. I don't think we need to worry about us having to fund an SRO. I don't see that ever happening if we should get one. What we could, what we could do, is the school security officer would provide us extra protection for them to be placed in a school now, where we need someone, we don't have anywhere. And then, we could possibly move them to one of the bigger schools, such as Blacksburg, Christiansburg High School, once the renovation's done, or one of the other schools, that would just give an extra layer of protection. But they would still both be there for security purposes, but they would still both entail two very different types of responsibilities, and who would be funding that. Does that make, I know it's kind of, does that make any sense at all whatsoever?
I think we were talking about the fact that if Blacksburg funded the officers for the school, that... Oh, gotcha, okay. No, I don't think that was it. I think she was saying that...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that even if they were funded, it would be the same expectations. But my thing is, if they fund it, then they can hire their own, and put them in an SRO position.
No, this would have to be county giving us the money for the SSO. And I'm not going to speak for the board of supervisors, but from what I can tell, from conversations with a couple of the board members, and some conversations at some of the meetings that I have seen, that they are all about our schools, and wanting to help us with anything they can, especially on the safety end of it. And I can't imagine that they would not help with this, hopefully, and fund this for us. But again, I can't, I can't sit here and say for sure they will. But from what I've gathered, I would like to think, it sounds very positive that we would probably be able to get help from the board of supervisors for these positions.
Okay, and that's great. But my point was, to Laura's comment, if the town of Blacksburg is willing to foot the bill for it, because the issue is staffing, then I'm not sure what the difference would be. I know they're different positions, but when they're in our schools, no matter if it's an SRO or a security officer, it's still the same responsibility. So whoever's paying for it, it should be their employee.
But, more clearly, whatever organization is writing the paycheck, it's their employee.
Yes.
So if, if Black, if we wanted to have Blacksburg fund this, the way to do it is the same way that the board of supervisors funds our teachers. They give us money, and then we support these security officers.
I think that makes total sense, Dr. Ranty.
I have a question. Is that legal? I know that our board of supervisors is supposed to cut us checks. Can a town cut us a check?
I have no idea. I have no idea. And if we had some type of agreement like that, that makes sense, Dr. Ranty, what you said, is that if there was an agreement to fund it, right, whatever that final number, let's say it was the total budgeted amount, was to be funded by an outside entity, I would have to look into how to do that. I don't know how to do that. We'd talk, legal counsel, we'd get involved, and we'd have some type of, you know, mutual understanding or agreement, and then we would move forward. But I do think, as Ms. Franklin was saying, and I think Ms. Parton added, it is different, though. A school security officer is not an SRO. They are not a police officer, they don't have the same authority, and they don't have the same responsibilities, and they don't answer to the sheriff or the police chief, they answer to the school superintendent. It's different. We would like to think that it still has the same deterrent effect, and has the same effect working with kids, and preventing crime, and things like that. But at the end of the day, it is different.
And it's also a different liability for our students, too, in certain situations, where our students may have legal ramifications for actions. The security officer can take care of an issue without necessarily having the student be arrested, that then has to go to a police, a police report for something like that to be...
100%. They would be our employees, so that's a different level than a police officer would have for a lot of things. Search and seizure and different things are totally different for civilians, which all of our employees are, as compared to law enforcement.
Okay, so we kind of started going around there, but let's try to get back on track. So, Ms. Bond, did you have anything?
I think when I made my comment, I think maybe I thought you were talking about Blacksburg Police Department, you know, opposed to the town of Blacksburg. So, but I guess, you know, splitting hairs on that, it's still whoever, like you said, writes the paycheck would do it. Even acknowledging the very different positions, I think the whole point of us doing this is so we would be in control of those four security officers, if that's what I'm understanding. So if we could figure out how to do it on our own, it'd be great.
Dr. Gitry?
Yeah, thank you so much, Dr. Bragan, for putting this together so quickly. So, in terms of the divisions liability, have you looked into our insurance, and what additional liability, like what are the ramifications for our coverage?
Yeah, I haven't talked to VACOR, went to our insurance policy, and there may be some increased coverage. I don't know what that would be. I know other places have done this. I know where I worked previously, we did this. And while there may have been an increase, it wasn't significant, where it was, hey, we can't do this, because our insurance just went up a half million dollars. It was nothing like that. But I don't know that for sure. I will find out. It would make sense that there would be some increased liability.
Okay, great. It would be helpful for me to know the difference with the SSR, SRO and SSO, and the implications of that difference, because I understand that there is a difference, but I have no idea what the difference is. In terms of, like, if certain things are reported to them, what are they required to report, for instance, something, you know, on that level?
The issue of searches, you know, how does that play out? You know, you just, that was just mentioned. And, I'm sorry to interrupt, but for me, that's a big one. Because if we have our officers who have a different level of ability, and how can that, worried about that being maybe abused, or seen as being a line crossed, because this is not an administrator, this is an officer? And that's a line that should not ever be crossed when it comes to our students.
Those are valid, both are valid points, and things that we would have to work out, the logistics between what that means, you know. And my thoughts on it, before it comes to practice, is that as an administrator in a school building, I would treat that person in the same manner that I would an SRO. So if I was doing some type of search or something like that, I wouldn't involve the police officer at all. I would do it myself, right? Because the threshold for suspicion is reasonable suspicion, instead of probable cause for civilians and for school administrators. So, but a lot of those things that you mentioned, Ms. Franklin and Dr. Gitry, are logistical things, would have to work out, if we were going to move forward this and figure out, and iron out those parameters ahead of time, so we all knew.
Yeah, because if you're going to put the budget request, I mean, it's going to be coming pretty fast. And so, the other question, it had to do with liability. Have you run this by our lawyer? Are there concerns? I know that you've done work locally. Are there other divisions in Virginia? Because I know you have experience in New Jersey, but specifically with the Code of Virginia and laws and regulations in Virginia, or is there anything we need to be aware of before making this decision?
I can get that information. I didn't move forward with that. But I do know this has been in effect in Virginia for a time, for the retired school security officers. So they've been out there. The difference is that the VRS change this year makes it more enviable for people that may want to do it. But I did not see, I would imagine some of the bigger districts have done this, as we moved more east. I don't know that, but I could find out.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to hear, you know, just like we did with the immersion program, looking at some of the other divisions and getting some feedback, because, I mean, this is, there's a lot of unknown here. So I think it'd be good to do a little extra.
So, Dr. Bragan, and if the board so wills to do so, there seems to be a lot of questions, and maybe to answer some, and have a little bit less confusion, would the board be willing to possibly ask our law enforcement agencies to come and further discuss this, and answer any questions we may have, to put us more at ease and more comfortable in making this decision about putting this in the budget?
For me, that could possibly be helpful, but I would like to hear from school administrators as to how this has worked for them in their jurisdictions, so that we know, you know, just like with our dual language, what are some of the pros and the cons of doing this, and do's and don'ts.
Could we do some research on that, possibly?
Absolutely.
Ms. Pissau?
Yeah, I had one more question, that's a little different from how the conversation has been going. Were we to move to a model like this, would there still be resource officers in addition to SSOs? Because as I understand, the program as a whole, it's kind of a, who are the people in your neighborhood, right? It's developing relationships, kind of, hey, I see you at my school, and I saw you downtown, and maybe if there's something that goes really wrong, and the officer's the one that comes to your house, but it's somebody that you know, or the officer has a sense of, this particular kid is having a hard time, you know, it's a, it's part of a community. And if an SSO isn't going to make those kinds of relationships. So would those elementary schools have no SRO at all anymore, or would there still be some relationship with Blacksburg Police Department?
It's a great question. My goal would be for every school to have a school resource officer, in that what we're trying to do now is just fill a gap that we can't fill, that people just aren't there, right? And no matter how great the school security officer is, they're not as good as police, for a variety of reasons. Some of the ones you just mentioned, the community connections, and the work outside of their work as an SRO. Not to mention their connection, direct connection to the police department, or the sheriff's department. That's significantly different than a security officer. So, again, Bernie Bragan's goal would be that every school has a school... has a school resource officer. Right now, we can't fill it. So this is kind of like just putting something in the middle. And then if they were filled, rather than just firing these people that are going to be offered, taking a job, signing up, going through the training, doing all this, that if we do get it filled, that we move them to the secondary, then we evaluate if that's working, if it's, if it's needed or not. That was the thought process. But to, to bring it full circle is, I would not want, as Ms. Franklin mentioned, our own police force. And we don't need that. We have a great working relationship with our three law enforcement agencies. They just can't fill it right now.
Yeah, I'll just add that, you know, I know in meeting with the PTE, the PTA at Beeks, talking to those folks, they were ready to march over to, to Blacksburg and start, start begging for, for an SRO, right? It's, it's important to them and, and they don't have it. So I, I think they would have gotten the same answer that you did. It's like, it's not, not a matter of, of want. It's a matter of, we can't find the people, right? So, but I like Dr. Gettrich's comment. I mean, I do think that, I think that we're kind of following the same kind of process here as a dual enrollment piece, right? So I think right now, you're looking for some head nods from us to say, we want to consider this further, but we need more information. And we do need some more questions answered, you know, more conversations with Blacksburg, it sounds like in particular, since they're probably the biggest, the biggest need because of the resource availability there. I mean, we got questions like, who are these people going to report to in our org chart, right? You know, it doesn't sound like you're going to hire anybody to oversee them. So then who, who would they report to? Where are we going to store firearms in our properties, right? So, so a lot of questions there. I think, I, I feel like the board would like to, and maybe having law enforcement here as a part of a follow-up presentation to help answer some of those questions before we could, could feel more comfortable with a, with approving it as a part of the budget. Now, that doesn't give us a lot of time, obviously, because we're going to be talking budget in January. But we're not approving a budget in January, so.
We'll get it done.
Go.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sorry. Yes, please.
So at one point in time, wasn't there the resource officers in like each school that was in the county at one point in time, wasn't there? No, there never has been. And like, the goal is to get one at every single school. So, I mean, it's not really my place, but just like an idea, like what kind of benefits would encourage them to like stay at that school and not like go off to like a different job or different opportunities, but having them like actually stay there and like giving them some sort of benefits that would encourage them to like, you know?
It's a great question, you know, Molly. I think the majority of the school resource officers that I interact with that are in our buildings now, that are in your high schools, they love their jobs. They love working with kids, working with our staff, being a part of that, being proactive, and they don't want to leave. You know, we had some people that left through attrition, retirement and other things that we can't fill. So right now, they're employed by the law enforcement agencies in the towns and in the county. So I can't really offer them anything because they're not our employees. You know, they're kind of on loan to us during their school day. But I think if you ask them and even ask the, the ones in your building, they really enjoy their job. They like it. They like being there. They like working with kids. It's energizing. It's rewarding. You know, especially for some of their jobs in, in, outside of schools are much more difficult and maybe not as rewarding, right, as a police officer? So, yeah, I think the people we have now do enjoy it and they do want to stay. I don't think that's the issue, that they're saying, oh, this job stinks. I'm going somewhere else. It's that, you know, at some point, people just retire and move on.
I know we had multiple conversations about this, but I feel like you shared at some point, at least from your conversations with, with Sheriff Parton, that like, like there just aren't as many folks interested in doing this, you know, coming through the academies and, and going through this program. Is that, is that correct?
100%. There are yet less 18-year-olds now than there were 10 years ago. That mean, that impacts everything. Kids going to college, kids going to the military, kids going to law enforcement. You know, they're advertising for these jobs on Route 81. You know, it used to be a prestigious job to be a state trooper or a sheriff's deputy. Like you, you had a waiting list. You had to go through all these tests to get there. They're, they're, they're trying to recruit people as best they can and still maintain their standards, and they're not being successful in filling the capacity. And it's not just Southwest Virginia. It's everywhere. There's a shortage.
And Chair Hudson, just to add to that, you, you are absolutely 100% right. Not only are they needing that position for the schools, but they're needing it just to fill everyday positions. They're, they've been really having a hard time trying to just get enough people to be able to, my husband was just at the Board of Supervisors meeting and he needs four to eight more jail positions just due to the fact of, you know, there's, there's been retirements. There's just the lack thereof of interest. There's lots of things that has impacted it. But I will say, one thing that I know that he and Chief Ramsey and Chief Brewster do try to do while putting law enforcement in our schools is that SROs are different from just other law enforcement officers and that, that connection and that want has to be there in their heart to be able to do that job the way they need to do it, along with the training and that type of thing. So they, they try to very carefully pick who they feel is the right person and the right fit for those schools. And so far, they've done a great job. I've heard nothing but, but great things about our SROs. And our SROs in these schools, I know, are extremely happy. Dr. Bragan was correct. They love being there. They love being with the kids. So it takes a special person to want to be an SRO or a school security officer. So we have to take that into account as well. Because you don't want, you don't want a law enforcement officer in there that doesn't really want to be there. So you've got to have that connection there, too. So they try to pick the, the best possible fit as they can. And they've, they've done a really good job with it so far. Takes time and people, so that's kind of what we're up against right now, unfortunately.
Got it. Makes sense.
Yeah.
Boarding other questions or discussion? Okay, thank you, Dr. Bragan. Okay, next up, do I have a motion to authorize a request to the Board of Supervisors for a capital project transfer of $223,115 to the 2024-25 school operating budget?
So moved.
Second.
Whoa. Ms. Purcell and Dr. Roundtree? Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gettrich?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Next up, the administration will present a proposed change to the 2024-25 MCPS school calendar to include an early release day for May 7th. What's going on on May 7th there, Dr. Bragan?
I'm not really sure, but we had some information that there may be something going on at Virginia Tech that may cause, cause some traffic issues and things. So we, we decided an early release day may be the best option. But there is also AP testing that's scheduled for that day, so we couldn't cancel that day or make it a total teacher workday that would not be beneficial to the students. So we thought an early release, release day on May 7th would be best.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024-25 MCPS school calendar update as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bond and Dr. Roundtree. Any discussion?
I did have a question about the 8th because of noise levels, especially for neighborhoods adjacent to the, the stadium, because that's a loud concert and a long, long concert that may go into the night and just concerns about standardized testing or other testing that might occur that day or just disrupted sleep schedules for students and employees.
You did mention that to me previously, Ms. Purcell. I'm not sure, you know, I mean, what would be the option? Cancel school on the 8th, too? I mean, there is AP testing and stuff that's scheduled that day as well. So maybe it would just be more understanding for people, maybe being a little tired.
So we need to have a conversation with Virginia Tech about their schedule. They need to coordinate it with ours.
I think this is a one-time event. I do understand that. And I, I hope it's not an annual event, at least during the school year.
I know I'm going to have a sore neck and back from all that jumping. I'm going to be doing it myself, but, huh?
Don't y'all, are y'all too old for that?
Going to do it anyway. All right, any more discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin? Dr. Gettrich?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Okay, the draft 2025 school board meeting calendar is provided for review and comment. Calendar will be presented again at the January organizational meeting for approval. Any, any comments, questions about that? Ms. Purcell?
So we got a budget meeting calendar at our October 1st meeting that had both January 21st and April 22nd as potential extra meetings to deal with bu- budgetary issues. Does it make sense to add it to this draft calendar?
Yes, yes. We'll, we'll coordinate that.
Okay. And we also have been doing joint meetings with the Board of Supervisors on the 5th Monday of the months that have them. So I wasn't sure if it made sense to just go ahead and reserve that time as well and if it was not confirmed with the Board of Supervisors, then to release it.
That'd be a good topic for us to cover with them in our next liaison meeting, for sure.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea to put it on the calendar as a possible meeting if, because that seems to work for both groups. So we could put it in. Doesn't mean we have to have the meeting as a possible joint meeting. We could do that, too. There's one in September.
March, June, September and December.
I would not recommend December. Yeah, so we could put some of those in.
It's not on Christmas or New Year's.
I'll, I'll do whatever you tell me to.
Should I keep going?
Keep going. No, you're rocking and rolling.
Do other people want to talk first? Okay, so one kind of ongoing conversation that we've been having is about the length of our meetings and just managing, trying to address everything that we need to address in a very limited amount of time. After one of those discussions earlier, I don't know, in the summer or early fall, I asked Dr. Bragan what he felt our peer divisions were in Virginia, just kind of based on, on size and demographics. And he gave me, me a list of those. And I went and looked at their division calendars to just to see how do they allocate their time, out of curiosity. So I, I have a list and I've shared that with Mr. Hudson and Dr. Bragan. And I wasn't sure if that's something we want to talk about now or talk about in January. Albermarl County has just dedicated days for discipline issues throughout the year that are not tacked on to other meetings. They're on the off, off weeks. They're a little bit bigger than us, so we might not need two a month, but maybe one. Other divisions start earlier. They start at 6:00 or 6:30. Roanoke County starts their work sessions at 3:30 in the afternoon. Just probably not realistic for us, but.
I have to say, I'd have to have a raise if we started at 3:30.
However, would thinking about shifting not that early, but shifting earlier or adding more time to work sessions to delve into topics more deeply, is that something to talk about now or just think about and talk about in January?
One of my concerns about moving our meetings any earlier than what they are, because they are public meetings. It makes it difficult for not just board members, but the community to be able to be here. And I, I always say shame on those folks who start meetings at 3 o'clock or 11 o'clock of the day. Who's there to watch what's going on? Or to listen or participate? I guess they don't want them to. That's just my thoughts on that.
We can go and, go around if you want. Dr. Gettrich? Any comments? It's okay if you don't.
I share your concerns with the length of our meetings. I think that there are some other organizational structural changes that need to take place. There have been conversations about using committees, other, other ways. I think that there are other ways of addressing some of our issues, and I'd like for us to have a conversation about that, about those other organizational options. That's what I think.
Could be a good topic for the organizational meeting in January to kind of figure out how we want to function.
Yeah, because I mean, I think two meetings a month, I think that's reasonable. But I think that there are other ways of managing the, the work that we, we need to do as a board.
Ms. Parton?
So I'm going to agree with Ms. Franklin on the time issue. I would love to be able to start at 3:30, but I don't think that's fair to the public. Kids are, some kids aren't even home from school by 3:30. So parents have to work and then the board members who do have full-time jobs that don't get off till 5:00 or later, that would make it almost impossible. And I really don't like putting that type of restriction on somebody that's wanting to serve their community. And it just seems like board seats are getting more and more restrictive with the, with the work that we have now, kind of restricting it and limiting, limiting it to certain types of citizens. So I would definitely say need to keep the time the same and less and give people time to grab something to eat, seeing as how we do go into the 11 and 12 o'clock timeframe a lot, pretty much the next day. So I'm, I'm okay with, with keeping it. Now, I do think that there are ways that we can definitely work on making our meetings shorter. A lot of that, I think, is organization. A lot of that is, and me included, when I say this, so please, nobody take offense, but us board members may be going off sometimes. And we need to reel it back in and kind of keep things and maybe not trying to overload our agenda that much. And, and if it does look like it's going to be too long, reaching out and, and maybe saying, hey, I know instead of it being a 12 or 1 o'clock night, you know, let's see if we can try to meet another time for, for an hour or, you know, two hours, whatever we need to do. But I do think that we need to work on organizing and trying to keep our meetings, not just for us and the community, but for our staff and administration as well that have to come to work the next day. So just to kind of keep that on the forefront and be respectful.
Ms. Bond?
Well, I actually did take a session at the SBA on new board members, but they went into that and it was fantastic and it gave me something I'm going to work toward. But one of the things, actually Loudoun Counties who did it because they had a whole new board and a new superintendent. And they said they actually did delegate committees, which a lot of boards feel like that takes away from their involvement. And I might think that way a little bit, too, but I do agree. I think that we just, we get in a, sometimes a conversation that can go on longer than it needs to. We beat around a ball for, you know, 45 minutes and say the same thing over and over again and ask the same question, just in different ways. And we do that in closed session and we do it out here. And, and I think if we get a little better, maybe about, you know, finding out our information before, you know, as, you know, Penny can vouch, we didn't use to ever go into meetings as long as we have in the last few years. This has been something that started over the last, I don't, not, I don't want to say exactly how many years, but it didn't used to ever be that way. And we still. but it didn't use to ever be that way, and we still covered the same type of information, and we got it all done. So I don't know what we're doing, other than I think all of us just want, we all have a different passion. We all want to express our passion, and we all want to ask lots of questions at times. But, I think we need to find a better delegated way to do that before our meetings, so.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, so I, I would like for meetings to go faster, but we do cover a lot of good important material during our meetings. So, I'm not always sure how to make them go faster. There's some public discord that we, we do in, in front of the public eyes, that we, we have some, some disagreements here showing that we don't all agree. I'm, I'm just not certain exactly how to shorten these meetings. I am open to, to suggestions, so. That's it.
So, for me, committees. We tried that at least one time, and it was a disaster, and we ended up just doing more work. Because it comes down to, one, there's, has to be a good trust level between who's gonna be doing committee work and what I believe you're gonna be bringing back to me to make decisions on. And as Jamie said, we signed up for some of this stuff. Now, these call meetings are very disruptive to folks' schedules and lives. So, having a set meeting, which doesn't always fit with timelines for what happens around discipline. But, we were able to have student matters and board meetings and still be out at reasonable times. It's a matter of communication and figuring out how we make sure we're being responsible, having that discourse, because I do believe that is important too. So that you start to agree with what I'm saying, and we can just let this go. But we do go round and round and round with the same thing over and over again. And I've been saying that for several years now. So, I think we need to have this conversation. But I think some structural things and how we get information and request information will help things a whole lot.
I do want to chime in. First off, to thank Ms. Purcell for actually doing some homework for us there, because that, that is helpful. It's nice to, to learn what our peers are doing, and, and the conversations that, you know, I know Jamie had down at the SBA and some of the, the sessions there, it's always good to learn from others. And certainly as your board chair, I, I do like the idea of dedicated, kind of penciled in dates for discipline hearings, so that I'm not having to, having to chase everybody to try to figure out who's available on what day or whatnot. We probably would make Mr. Garrettson's life easier to just kind of know these are the dates. If we have them, if we have cases, then we schedule them, if we don't, then we get a free night, right? But, I also hear, hear the comments here, I think it's probably part of a broader conversation at January's organizational meeting in terms of how we want to consider structuring our meetings, communications, all those kind of things, and see, see where we can get. I'd love to know, I'd love to learn more about how it used to be done, and kind of how, how folks got through the schedules before, if you were doing discipline and meetings, I don't know, like, were y'all doing three at night? Because we're doing that.
Sometimes, yes, sometimes more.
Alright, so yeah, I think there's definitely a conversation to be had there. I'm definitely up for trying new things, especially if it, if it helps make things go better. But, it's a good conversation for us to, to have in January. So it sounds like, based on the conversation we're having now, aside from a couple of points that Ms. Purcell made earlier, it sounds like, kind of keep this draft calendar mostly in place going into our January meeting. Although, we're not approving this calendar yet, although our first meeting is on January 7th, we can at least agree on that, right? Otherwise, we're not gonna have the organizational meeting.
And would you know, we're gonna have twice as many meetings that's on this calendar, right? It's a joke, y'all.
So, while we're looking at calendars, we need to schedule retreats.
Yeah.
Okay?
I agree.
And the sooner, the better. In fact, if we do two, it wouldn't hurt my feelings, okay?
That'd be a great job for the, for the board chair in January.
Well, and, okay, Linwood, well, let me tell you now then, okay? You know, that was another thing in my retreat, I mean, on my retreat, but my session, is they kind of talked about the fact that they did set and kept and prepared, you know, like, okay, this is when you're gonna do this. And, so even if we set retreats and had them the same dates, that would, I mean, that could go in my, my booklet that I'm preparing. And, and it does help to plan, because I don't think anybody minds, but if you don't, I mean, work a job like me, you don't have those days that, you know, so, but if I can know ahead of time and prepare for it, then, so I do think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah, along with the retreats, it would be nice to have the V SBA days marked off on our calendar here.
Sure.
And associated with that, I don't know if it's possible, but it'd be nice to, to move our November 4th meeting to November 11th, so that we're not having, uh, having meetings on election nights.
I actually agree with that, I don't know, I've, I've never wondered why we, the, the Board of Supervisors don't even meet on a holiday. When, if, if a holiday falls on their meeting night, it gets moved and knocked us out of our meeting. But that's no problem, but I, I don't know why we've ever met on election night. Especially when we have board members that, that could be running, and I know it's not every year, but even with that, I'd, I'd be fine moving that meeting night to a different night.
That feels like a easy change to make, any, any opposition to that one?
Nope, because that's my birthday. The 4th.
Okay. Tasha, I assume you're capturing all these changes? Awesome, thank you, ma'am. Okay, great, board, anything else on the calendar?
So, all those V SBA workshops, let's throw those in there too. I was kidding.
Nope.
They can be color-coded, there's difference, it's not all green.
Okay, great. Next up, Dr. Amanda Wadner will present the MCPS staffing update.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, board members, Dr. Bragan. I will present information on our staffing and vacancies across the school division at this time. Begin by giving you an overview of our vacancies by category. So this is broken down, you can see the number of vacant positions within each category. I've also provided for you the number of total positions in those categories. So, for example, if you look at administrator, we currently have four vacancies. Overall, there are 87 dedicated administrator positions. So that means 4.6% of those positions are currently unfilled. Among our certified instructional positions, we have 11 out of 816 positions that are unfilled, so that's a 1.3% unfilled rate. Special education, that is where we see the highest percentage of vacancies. We have 15 out of 140 positions that are currently unfilled. However, I do want to point out that five of those positions, teacher positions, are relatively new. In fact, probably just within the last two weeks, we've added two new special education teacher positions based on our, our interest in trying to expand our continuum of services and support for our special education students. And then among our classified staff, we have 17, I'm sorry, 717 positions, and 57 of those are currently unfilled. So that's about an 8% rate of, of those positions being unfilled. So that's just kind of an overview by category. Now I'll go through and kind of explain where those positions fall. So again, these are our specific administrator vacancies. I mentioned that we have four, and I know you see five on there, but I did want to point out that our supervisor of special education, that position was approved at the last board meeting, and that individual started there yesterday. So that, that is now a filled position. But we are currently interviewing for director of secondary education. We have a candidate identified for our school compliance officer. We have a candidate recommended for the assistant principal 504 coordinator position. And then our most recent, recent administrator vacancy is our administrator of ELA curriculum and reading intervention. And, and that's a new vacancy, that position became vacant yesterday. Our school certified vacancies are listed, and as I said, there's 11 of those there. So, some of those positions, we are hoping to fill tonight, where we are bringing forward some candidates. At Falling Branch, we have a school counselor to bring forward. At Gilbert-Lincoln, we recently had a teacher retire, but we had posted that position, so we have a candidate to bring forward to fill that position there, as well as a STEM teacher position at that school that was also recently vacated. We continue to look for a counselor at BMS, that's the grant-funded position. ESL, we recently added three and a half new positions, again, based on student need. We have an IT data analysis resource teacher position we're looking to fill, that's a fairly recent vacancy. And then we continue to try to fill it part-time health and PE position at Montgomery Central. These are our special education vacancies that I, I mentioned, again, there's 15 of those. Again, many of these are new positions, the board certified behavior analyst, that was a new position added this year that unfortunately we've not been able to fill. We do have two full positions in, in the school division right now. Good news on our school psychologist positions, we've had two vacancies there all year, but we do have a candidate that we're bringing forward tonight to fill one of those positions. We continue to struggle to find speech-language pathologist candidates. Dr. Bragan referenced, we are working on a grow your own program, so that's something Dr. Walker and I have been communicating on and working, hoping to work with Radford University to identify individuals within the school division who may be interested in, in pursuing that. I mentioned our special education teacher positions, you see that seven vacancies there, but again, five of those are very recent new, new positions, and we do have two candidates that we're bringing forward to fill two of those positions. And then the special education teacher position at Montgomery Central, we do have a candidate who's been approved for that. We are just working on filling that person's position within the school division, but we are making progress on that. Moving on to our classified and support staff on the operational side. So we do continue to have a number of custodian positions, five in our elementary schools, nine in our secondary schools. We are bringing forward four candidates tonight to fill some of those positions. Grounds maintenance lead, we do have a candidate recommended for that position. We continue to look for two more HVAC technician positions. We are bringing forward a candidate to fill our technology systems analyst position. We do currently have four bus driver positions, but we do have a candidate bringing forward tonight, and we have another candidate in the hiring process. And we've also identified a candidate to fill our van driver position. Moving on to classified instructional vacancies. Again, we do continue to look for a, a number of people to fill para positions. Again, as I, as I've said previously, we have added a significant number of new para positions, you know, based on trying to meet the needs of our students. So we have two preschool para positions that Auburn Elementary was trying to fill. We do have 16 paraprofessional positions in our elementary schools. We do have five candidates for bringing forward tonight, and then there are additional three who are in the, the hiring process. At the secondary level, we have four open para positions with one candidate that we've recommended to fill one of those positions. Once recessed age positions, this is a time of year when we often do see a lot of resignations from that, those positions. They're often filled by college students, so we do currently have 10 vacancies, but we do have five candidates who are recommended to fill half of those positions. We are in the process of filling an AA position in our special education office, and we do have a candidate recommended for administrative assistant position at Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. Our numbers on diversity, again, one of our strategic plan goals is to continue working to diversify our workforce. So our new hires as of now, our new hires that we've hired this year, 15.9% of them identify as minority employees. And then overall, if you look at all of our employees, 7.8% identify as minorities. And then lastly, I just want to give you our, our substitute information. So currently, we have 436 active substitutes. I've given you, so you can kind of look at the whole semester, I've given you the breakdown of our fill rates for teachers in Paris by month. So you can see August was our highest month, but November was slightly better than October and September for our teacher fill rate. And we've been fairly consistent in our fill rate with Paris in, in the mid 40% rate, which it seems low, but it's actually fairly normal if you compare that to national fill rates for para subrates. And then I've broken it down by community for you as well to see. Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wadner. Board, any questions or comments?
Yeah, just thanks for the, the more description on the, the second slide there with percentages of positions vacant and the, the numbers of vacancies. I appreciate that.
Anything else? You can go around if you want to. Okay. Ms. Bond?
No.
Okay. Ms. Barton, Dr. Getchey?
So I, I just have a couple of quick questions. They're quick, I think. So, special ad. I feel compelled to ask about special ad. So, we, the budget request, I believe, was for seven new positions, correct? And so there, there are five new positions, are the, those five new positions, they were approved for this year. So why does, why is it four months into the year that these are, that we're seeing these as new positions? Have they been, the five new positions been unfilled and open this whole time?
No, some have been recently added. For example, within the last two weeks, we've added a new position at Auburn Elementary School, at Auburn High School. Those, that was based on requests from the principal, as well as the needs of the building. So, you know, there, there is money within the budget to, to budget for those positions, so those were very recently added. Blacksburg Middle School had one added over the summer, which I believe we've filled. Falling Branch had one added fairly early in the year, we now have a candidate for that position. Blacksburg High School had one added fairly early in the year, and that, we now have an individual to fill that position. So, it's kind of been a little bit of a trickle effect where we've added new positions, you know, just based on needs, but based on the efforts of those buildings to expand that continuum of services and support for students.
Okay. I wish we could do something about that, I mean, that's 10%, that's a lot. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin? Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Awesome. Alright, board, any items of unfinished business? Seeing none? Any items of new business?
Yes, so, a few months ago, we had a presentation on school energy audit, and with material for corrective actions for those energy audits. That was from a, a Virginia-approved auditor. There's a couple of them around, and I was wondering what the, the status of that was, if that was coming back to the board at some point, or, or what the situation was.
Yeah, we're still working with that, with our director of facilities, Mr. Harris, on what's the best company to do that. What we were focusing on in, in the interim was working on solar proposals, and try to get that up and running as soon as we can, and we should be ready to present on that in the very near future. And we're still evaluating those other energy-efficient companies that come in. There's, there's an ESCO company that would come in and basically say, hey, we can save you this much in doing these energy-efficient things, and you'll use that money to fund the bond to buy these upgrades, whether that be the lighting or a couple of boilers and things like that. Then there's other companies that just come in and assess your energy efficiency, and let's say they were gonna save a half million dollars a year in electricity. Well, they'll say, okay, we'll save you a half million, and we're gonna take half of that, so 250. Contracting with a company to come in and do that, kind of, contract is the wrong word. I contacted someone who came in, take a look at our school, you know, would that be an appropriate thing to do? And the company's called Synergistics, and they said, we really can't help you. So that was one that just went by the wayside. The company we initially brought in, the people that were associated with, there's different people now, point people, so we're working with that to get that set up. We're still working on it.
Sounds good, thanks.
I have two things. One, kind of building off of something that I think Ms. Bond has mentioned tonight, and then in a conversation that she and I had, had earlier about our trip to the V SBA conference. One reason I didn't ask leadership to maybe add board reports was because of length of meeting, but perhaps we all who attended could just write a few sentences about what we attended and what we learned. And then Ms. Osborne can add that to the, to the minutes, so that there's some, some transparency about the work that we did at the conference. the work that we did at the conference. The second request, uh, that I had, and I, this, I'm, I wasn't sure if this should be old business or new business, but we'll keep it on new. Um, we had, uh, an independent outside review of our special education program, and I know that the report, um, that we'll get from, from the division is in progress. But I wanted to ask that when we have that action plan, that the outside review is made public, just for transparency reasons?
I think it's fair. I think if I remember correctly, Chair Hudson mentioned that when it came up, that why don't we, um, give the division a chance to respond and put together what our proposal would be to address some of the concerns that were identified. And at that point, we would share the report as well. So that makes total sense.
Thanks.
We're working on that.
Great. Board, any other items? Yep?
Just could I piggyback on what Laura was saying, sorry, I got a bug in my throat, with the V SBA conference. Also, when we did, maybe adding it to the minutes, our comments, also Virginia dropped out of the national organization. And I believe in the general session, they were talking about that they had something in place for that. And, you know, the, my years of being on the board, I, I found that the national conferences were very beneficial too. I mean, you, you got to do a lot of back-and-forth conversation with other people across the nation and, and how they did things. And, and it was always enjoyable. Um, so during that time, maybe could we, you know, check into that? Tosh, could we find out some information about that and have that along with that? So that way, if we wanted to move in that direction, if we don't, so be it.
What our options are, right? Yeah. Board, any other items of new business? Okay. Any, are there any announcements?
Just thanking the choir for, uh, for, for singing at our meeting today. And then also, uh, since we won't see each other until next year, happy holidays. Yeah, we're going to have a meeting, I know.
You're so cute.
To those we don't see, Merry Christmas. And also, the open house robotics is tomorrow night.
Yep.
At CHS, I think at six. So for anybody who can come to that.
And Blacksburg Middle School has their performance of Elf Junior. That'll be Thursday, Saturday, and Sunday, because they're, they're marching in the holiday parade on Friday in Blacksburg, so.
Middle School Theater, there's nothing like it.
Yeah, right, right.
Oh, Jesus, this is not school-related, but I am a member of the Lions Club, and I have been for years and years and years. And they are having their, and we do have good sponsors, um, that, that do help education and that type of thing. And we have a lot of our students that come and help set up and tear down. So kudos to you guys for, for your help with that. But that's Saturday at the Christiansburg Rec Center. I believe it starts at nine and ends at four, so.
Okay, great.
I have one more thing.
Yeah, please?
Um, I just wanted to thank Ms. Bond and Mr. Hudson for their leadership this year. You don't have to look too deeply at the closed session hours and special sessions to see how much time we have spent together this year. And that, their work is even on top of that, and much of it is invisible to us. So just thank you both.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
More kudos to Linwood than me.
Come on now.
You're my rock, Jamie. I couldn't do this without you. So Board, if you'll indulge me for just a minute, um, you know, as we're getting near the end of the year, ju- okay, maybe, maybe three minutes, Penny. Um, as I think back throughout the year, you, my toxic trade is when I think back, I'm usually focused on the negative kind of stuff, because that's just how my mind works, right? So I force myself to look back this year and look at all the great things that we accomplished together. Um, so I just want to quickly list a few of those, because I think we should all be proud about these. Seems like years ago, but we passed a collective bargaining this year, which was, which was a major accomplishment. And we've already seen some, some positive fruit being borne out of that. We changed our school calendar with our new spring break. Haven't seen how that's going to play out yet, but I know I've heard a lot of positive things from families with MCPS aligned with Virginia Tech and Radford. Before their spring breaks, families able to take vacations together that they've never been able to do before, which is awesome. Um, at least I'm planning to. I don't know about the rest of y'all. In particular, it was awesome seeing CHS really break ground this year. Every time you go by there, that thing looks more and more impressive. Um, I, I can't wait to see that. Uh, I, I heard from Josh while we were at the SBA, he's hoping to get us in there with a hard hat tour here pretty soon, um, which would be awesome as a part, uh, in that new wing that they're building. So that was awesome. We picked a new food services provider. Um, certainly, we were super excited at the beginning of that. Um, you know, we're still, we're still seeing how that's bearing out. But, um, you know, at least the food that they provide us for meetings has been outstanding. So definitely appreciate that. You know, one thing I almost forgot about, but we passed that secure storage of firearms resolution, which had huge support throughout the community. We had the gun locks handed out in the schools. That was hu- a huge initiative that I'm not sure anybody expected us to accomplish inside of this year, but that was awesome. Oh, by the way, our cell phone policy, we passed that before most other counties did, before they were required to. I have friends in other counties whose school boards still haven't figured out how to pass their own policy yet. And we just did it. We had the courage of doing that. So I also should say, this isn't just us in the school board, this is the administration, all of us working together in these shared accomplishments. It's easy for us to say yay and aye up here, but a lot of that work is coming from the administration out there. Um, we passed a new English language curriculum. Um, and I've heard, heard positive feedback from that as well, as that's gotten rolled out. You have the sick bank improvement, we just talked about that recently. That was a, a pretty simple change that's hopefully going to have a big impact for a lot of folks. Um, you know, we're getting paychecks twice a month now, right? I mean, I, I remember when Mr. Brown rolled in here, you know, and just innocently asked that question. And we were like, yeah, why aren't we doing that, right? And thanks to Dr. Bragan, everyone in finance there, I got this weird deposit, uh, last month. I was like, what the heck is this thing? I was about to call, uh, a Dr. Widener and say, I don't know what this money is. And then turned out, it was the first half of that paycheck. So that was awesome. Um, and it sounds like that went off without a hitch. A lot, lot, huge thank you to the administration for that. But the dual language program that we're getting off the ground here with all the excitement around that, again, assuming it passes a budget, uh, was a huge amount of work from our folks on that and super excited about it. And really, just all the, the positions we created, the new folks we've hired, all the talent we brought into our, our district, I think everyone should be proud about that, especially all of you working so hard to do that recruiting and the hiring and, and, uh, all the efforts on retention there. So we have accomplished a lot this year, and I'm, I'm super proud of it. I hope you guys are.
All right, great. With that, upcoming school board meetings, uh, obviously we'll have our organizational meeting on January seventh. Um, at that point, we'll, we'll approve the actual calendar moving forward and the, the future meetings after that. Next up, do I have a motion to enter into closed session is authorized by section two dot two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia to discuss a personnel matter and illegal matter, and a student matter, sorry. A personnel, illegal, and a student. Second.
Second.
Oh, my God. Dr. Roundtree and Dr. Getchry. Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchry?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. We're now in closed session. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.